Good evening. I'm calling to order the meeting of the Arlington School Committee. It is Tuesday, November 18th at 6:30 PM. Tonight's meeting will be conducted in person and for the use of Zoom. This meeting is simultaneously being broadcast on ACMI and the meeting is being recorded. Because all members are present, votes will be taken by voice unless a roll call is required. So, we, the first item on the agenda is open, is public participation, open meeting. We have no one for that. This is public comment, sorry. We have no one for that. The AE representative is here. Julie, you want to say anything?
Hi.
Good, thank you. And the student representatives are not here yet, but when Zach gets here, gets here at some point, we'll ask for an update on what is happening at Arlington High School. Okay, so, the next order of business is to fill the school committee vacancy. I'm gonna, first of all, I want to say that it was, I thought it was really gratifying to see 11 people, one person withdrew, but 11 people put their names forward to be candidates for the school committee. We really appreciate that, that shows a lot of interest in the community on what the school committee does. So, we are operating pursuant to policy B, 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 E. And the first four, three parts of the, of the policy have been filled. We posted the position, people submitted their resume, their curriculum vitae and their application letters. And then, we have invited all of you to this meeting tonight. So, all of the candidates, I'm gonna read the last two parts, so we're all clear on what the rules are. All candidates for membership shall be invited to an open meeting to make a case for their appointment, and each member of the school committee may ask the candidate's questions. The appearance of the candidates will be determined by lot prior to the first speaker. The order of the questions and the school committee members shall be by rotation. The chair of the school committee has the discretion to set an appropriate time limit for each candidate's presentation and for questioning by the school committee. So, we have a three-minute time limit for your presentation. I have not set a limit for the school committee questions, so we'll just play that by ear. We did a, a draw by lot prior to the meeting. Ms. Diggins and I did that. And the order of appearances, you shall have a tent, a card with your name and a number on it. Mary Pat Lancelotta is first, Alham Sadat is two, Valentina Di Blasi is three, Katie Peterson is four, Catherine Cohen is five, Dmitri Vasilov is six, Justin Harris is seven, Jeff Miller is eight, Crystal Haynes Capathorn is nine, and then Heather Lee is 10. Once all candidates are presented, the school committee should take a roll call vote to select a new member. Balloting shall continue until one candidate secures a majority. The candidate with the least amount of votes shall be excluded in the next round of balloting. Upon winning a majority, the new member shall begin service on the school committee after taking the oath of office. So, the first person, is there, are there any questions from the committee about the process at all?
What are these papers for?
Just to have as a point of reference, that's it. Okay, that's it. Do we have to do the vote by roll call? Yeah. But if you wanted to circle a name or write notes, you can do it.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
Could you ask any candidate coming forth if they have any conflicts of interest under Mass General law?
Okay. Before they speak or after?
During, in their presentation, so that it's disclosed.
Okay. I'll ask that. Any conflicts under Mass General law? Okay, I'll ask that question after your three minutes, and then we'll go to other questions.
So, just, sorry, just to clarify, so for each candidate, we're gonna stop for questions after?
Yeah.
Okay.
After each one. Does that sound good?
Yeah, fine.
Okay, good. All right. All right, good. Okay, so our first candidate is Mary Pat Lancelotta. Mary Pat, come on up. And I'm gonna put the timer on, but go ahead.
Okay, good evening. Thank you for having me. My name is Mary Pat Lancelotta. I have been in Arlington for eight years. I have a seven-year-old daughter who's in first grade at Stratton. So, Libby has ADHD. And based on some early conversations that we had in preschool about her behavior and her learning profile, I personally was initially not sure if public school was going to be the right setting for her. In fact, was kind of guided in that direction by the teachers at her very nurturing and wonderful preschool. So, we really were worried that she wouldn't have the support she needed to truly thrive. And we were leaving that behind. But for the community, you know, we decided to give the Arlington Public Schools a chance. And because of my concerns, I became very involved early on, initially as a room rep, a library volunteer, I'm now a member of the PTO Board and a room rep coordinator. And I am so grateful that we made the choice that we did. I've seen firsthand the dedication of our educators, the strength of the community. Her teachers have worked really closely with us and with her to ensure that she has the tools that she needs. Thanks to their support, a 504 plan, a targeted help at home, she's really thriving and she's able to bring her best self to school every day. I know that not everybody has the privilege of having choice, and nor does everybody have the wonderful experience that we've had with neurodivergent children in our own schools. So, beyond academics, what's made the most difference for us and what I think is most important about a public school education is the community. So, the diversity of her classmates, neighborhood friendships, and, you know, the school environment that really embraces every single child as an individual has really been crucial for her and for, you know, our overall experience. Because of this, I believe that Arlington has everything it needs to become one of the top districts in the Commonwealth. My priority is to ensure that every student who's neurotypical or neurodivergent has an opportunity to thrive and rise to the level of their ability in our schools. So, through my involvement in the school so far, my conversations with other parents, really across the country, I've been looking into what leading districts across the country and leading schools are doing to bring out the best in every student. A few areas that stand out to me that I would love to spend more time focusing on would be, number one, we really need to be thoughtful and evidence-based in our use of educational technology. It really, it has a real role, and I think it's very dependent on the teacher, but there is research on screen time and attention that is evolving quickly. We owe it to our students to better understand which tools enhance learning, how they're best deployed, when they're best deployed, and which ones may create distraction or developmental concerns versus helping as they're intended to do. Second, we should learn from top-performing districts, both in Massachusetts and nationally. You know, we have neighbors next door who are among the top high schools, or top school districts in the entire country.
You have 10 cities.
What are they?
Just 10 cities.
Okay. So, I'm gonna, I'm gonna kind of jump to, you know, I care deeply about preparing Arlington students, not just for academic success, also for civic engagement and the rapidly changing economy that's being shaped by the industries that are right here in the Boston area. So, I want us to be able to use and define the skills and mindsets that we want our graduates to have, ensure our curriculum and our investments align with that vision. I know we're running out of time, so thank you for having me, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Lancelotta. Okay, my first question at the request of a member of the school committee, do you have any conflicts?
I do not.
Thank you very much. Okay, I'm gonna open it up for questions. We do it by rotation. I'm gonna start with Ms. Exton.
You are, would be filling a vacancy for a position typically filled in a townwide election. The person that we appoint tonight will not have been elected by the voters of Arlington. So, can you speak a little bit about what you feel qualifies you to understand and serve the will and interests of the people of Arlington?
I mean, I think my involvement in the community and my, you know, willingness to, you know, step out and sort of understand what the divergent set of needs are. Again, I speak from one experience, but based on my experience, I've done a lot of research into, you know, what makes programs, particularly for kids with ADHD and special learning needs, accessible. So, you know, just professionally, I have a history of leading large divergent teams, large global teams, understanding the needs of diverse stakeholders, developing solutions that work for a broad range of people. It's something that I'd be excited to bring to bear in the community that I live in.
Ms. Carden?
Thank you. So, my intent is to ask everybody the same question. So, you talked about it a little bit, but if you could tell me specifically about your involvement in town or school affairs, including any involvement that you may have had with any of the prior override or debt exclusion campaigns?
I'm not familiar with the second.
Okay.
The campaigns that you mentioned. My involvement in the school, you know, as I mentioned, has been, you know, I initially got very involved, you know, as, as a room rep, I volunteered in the library, you know, really just to try and better understand sort of the inner workings of the school. I did a ton of research into private schools in the area, as I mentioned, when my daughter was going into kindergarten, because I just wasn't sure that she was going to thrive in a public school setting. So, I really needed to see firsthand. So, I've gotten very involved in the school. I'm now on the PTO Board as a room rep coordinator, so involved in sort of planning all of the school events and things like that. Haven't been as much involved in the kind of broader Arlington community, but when I saw this opportunity came through, that's exactly what I saw.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Allison Anapi?
Thank you. So, I'm hoping to do the same thing that Mr. Carden is saying.
I get to be the guinea pig that hears all the questions first.
Exactly.
Sorry.
Anyway, so, my questions are, are you planning to, if, assume, okay, acknowledging that things may change at this point, would you be thinking about running for the select, the school committee seat in the spring? And also, what role would you see yourself serving in the upcoming override?
Yes, I would, and I apologize, I'm actually not familiar with the override.
Okay, thank you.
What do you see as the biggest challenge facing the district, and how would you, as a school committee member, address it?
Wow. You know, first of all, I don't profess to know everything. I think part of my interest in being in this role would be the opportunity to learn. I know my perspective, and I know the perspectives of people that, you know, I interact with on a regular basis. At this point, I'm not in a position to say I personally know what is the biggest challenge in the district, but I'm eager to learn what that is by reaching out to others in the community. I, I think that that's something that needs to, you know, get a lot of input and then also contextualize with, you know, what we know about other school districts and, you know, kind of what, what we think will really help take Arlington to the next level.
Thank you.
The school committee has three primary roles or responsibilities. One is the oversight of the budget. The second is the supervision of the superintendent, and third is to set policies. What do you see as the school committee's core responsibilities around the district budget, and how familiar are you with APS's current financial situation?
Admittedly, I'm not very familiar with, I mean, I think I've seen statements, but I don't necessarily know what that means in the context of other, you know, school districts. I don't really have any comparative data to speak to. Again, for me, a lot of the opportunity would be, you know, to learn about some of those things and, you know, see how Arlington compares and see where investments would be best made to improve the, the quality of the district.
Thank you.
All right, thanks very much, appreciate it. Thanks for coming up.
Yeah, thank you.
Yes, thank you. Our next candidate is Alham Sadat, and the first question goes to Mr. Carden.
Do I speak first, or?
You speak first.
Yes.
Yes, you speak first, but then, yes, thank you. Sorry about that.
Okay, thanks, thanks so much. Thanks for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Alham Sadat, and Arlington has been my family's home since 2016. I'm a parent of three students in our schools, two at the Hardy and one at the Audison, and I'm committed to strengthening the systems that help all of our students succeed. I have a track record of service to our schools. Over the last eight years, I've dedicated my time to supporting Arlington schools, families, and educators. I have served on the steering committees of the 2019 debt exclusion and operational override campaigns, which enabled the rebuilding of Arlington High School and provided stable funding for municipal and school activities. I also supported the 2023 operational override that helped advance the district's priorities around excellent instruction, a diverse and talented workforce, and strong family partnerships. At the school level, I've been active with the Hardy PTO since 2018, leading the garden team, building curriculum around native plants and pollinators, and helping our, plan our STEAM festival so families can engage with hands-on learning in those, in that context. In leadership roles beyond our school, I have served as a town meeting member since 2019. I also served as the chair of the Arlington Libraries Foundation, where I oversee governance, budgeting, and fundraising, and act as a key spokesman for our libraries. This role has honed my skills in nonprofit leadership, alignment of internal priorities, and thoughtful partnership building. Professionally, I'm the executive director of the Innovation Trail of Greater Boston and previously led the Research Ethics Consultancy at the Broad Institute. These roles have strengthened my expertise in strategic planning, stakeholder engagement, and evidence-based decision-making. One of my key strengths in decision-making expertise is navigating areas without easy answers. Much of my work, especially in research ethics, has centered on making decisions where there's no clear or easy right answer. I'm experienced in weighing competing priorities, deep, listening deeply to stakeholders with differing perspectives, and arriving at fair, transparent, and principled decisions. These are the kinds of decisions school committees routinely face, balancing immediate needs with long-term planning, supporting educators while being responsive to families, and allocating resources in ways that promote equity and student well-being. If selected to this interim role, I would work hard to ensure Arlington Public Schools remain strong, equitable, and student-centered. I'm committed to transparency, responsiveness, and constructive collaboration with my fellow committee members, educators, and families. Thank you for your consideration. I would be honored to serve and support our community during this transition period.
Thank you very much. The first question goes to Mr. Carden.
Okay, thank you. So, you did, you did touch on this, but I'll give you another opportunity to discuss your involvement in town and school affairs, including specifically any override or debt exclusion campaigns.
Yeah, so, since we've moved to Arlington, I've participated in leadership roles on every single override and debt exclusion. And, you know, these are the types of things that a lot of people raise their hands for when they don't have the time and they have young children. But I think it's, these are critical for supporting our schools, and, and I recognize that need and, you know, raise my hand when people ask. And I think, I feel really great about those decisions, and they've led to sustaining strong schools and maintaining budgets that are, that we already know are constrained. But yeah, I already mentioned my specific contributions.
Thank you. Dr. Allison Anapi?
Thank you. So, again, understanding that things may change between now and then, at this time, are you planning to run for a school committee in the spring? And what role do you see yourself serving in the upcoming override?
Yeah. To the first question, at this time, I do not see myself running for a school committee in the spring. I do feel like I can bring a lot to the school committee during this time of difficult decisions and in this transition phase with the experience that I have. I think, based on other commitments, I don't think I would run for the, for the full term thereafter. To the second question, do I plan to participate and be involved in the override? Absolutely, yes.
Ms. Schlickman?
What's the biggest challenge facing the district? How would you address it as a school committee member?
I think there's probably a lot of different challenges. One that I am familiar with is with, again, you know, limited budgets that need to get stretched, stretched a lot of, across a lot of priorities, making sure that every, every student has what they need to thrive. So, making sure that we're uplifting the students that need extra support to get them the support to, to meet standards and achieve to their maximum capacity, and also ensuring that students that are performing at a higher level aren't left to, you know, feel unengaged and have, continue to be challenged. For me, that's been a, you know, I think, I see that as an obvious challenge, but I imagine there's a lot with, with budgetary constraints.
Thank you. Ms. Gillison?
What do you see as the school committee's core responsibilities around the district budget, and how familiar are you with APS's current financial situation?
I'm familiar with the general school budget, as, as serving on the town meeting, you know, that's something that we review and approve every year in the spring. In terms of the current constraints, I am familiar with, with them and understand that the town is facing, you know, some significant kind of gaps in funding for both operational and other types of funding, things that are gonna be coming up. So, I, I recognize the, the challenging time that we're in financially, both in schools and across the town.
Thank you.
To your knowledge, do you have any conflicts of interest that would prevent you from serving on the school committee?
To my knowledge, I do not.
Okay, thank you very much. There's no further questions. Thanks so much.
Do I get to go? Can I go?
Ms. Exton? Sorry. Come on in, you're back, you're back, sorry. Sorry, sorry.
We forgot Liz.
I'm sorry. If you're gonna rotate, you gotta rotate.
I know, I know, I gotta like, I gotta do it. Go ahead.
You would be filling a vacancy for a position typically filled in a townwide election. So, the person appointed this evening will not have been elected by the voters of Arlington. What qualifies you to understand and serve the will and interests of the people of Arlington?
Yeah, I think from the perspective of both a parent and, and somebody who's worked on campaigns that understands kind of the, the tensions between budgets and what the ideal, you know, the ideal scenario for running a, a school district are. Understanding those tensions, I think, is really important in navigating them in ways that are fair and thoughtful. I think I have a decent understanding of that, and also in various governance roles around, across town, both in town meeting and on the various override campaigns, as well as governance experience. And as chair of the Arlington Libraries Foundation, I think a lot of those skills would be very applicable to this role and provide the expertise that, that would be needed in, in where there's a gap in not allowing, you know, our, our town members to, to be able to vote.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Valentina?
Thank you. Do you want, you're a...
That is a keepsake.
Thank you.
Of course.
Good to start?
Yes, please.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. My name is Valentina Di Blasi, and I'm the parent of a kindergartner at Thompson Elementary, as well as a three-year-old who will be all too soon joining his sister. As both a parent and a leader in the education field, I am deeply invested in the future of Arlington Public Schools and would be honored to serve on this committee. My motivation to serve comes from both a personal and a professional place. As a parent, I see this every day. I am deeply grateful for the dedicated teachers, the administrators, and the staff who nurture our students every day, and they're key stakeholders for this committee. As an educator, I have spent over 20 years working to create environments where students can thrive, where families can feel connected, and educators can feel supported. So, my goal in joining this committee is to contribute that experience in service to our community and help advance the strategic plan and all its bold priorities. Professionally, I serve the, as the director of International First Year Programs at Northeastern University, where I oversee student success initiatives, strategic planning, and complex program operations. I also hold advanced degrees in education, and I'm currently completing my doctorate in education with a focus on parental involvement and equitable learning outcomes. Locally, through Thompson, I've served in the PTA, and it's been an eye-opening experience. It's given me a really strong understanding of the hopes and the questions and the concerns that families in our districts have. If selected, I would try to bring that sort of strategic experience, as well as that parent perspective, to advance the district's top priorities, which for me are three. Equity and excellence. I, I really support the district's plan to use a multi-tiered system of supports to close achievement gaps, particularly for, you know, all the focal groups, particularly for me, multilingual learners like my children. And my experience, both in research, as well as my professional practice, has shown me that closing these gaps really requires intentional policy, consistent support, and strong communication with families. The second priority, supporting facilities and technology planning. As the daughter of two architects, I know how important our buildings are as both learning and working environments. So, investing in them, investing in our buildings, as well as planning for long-term sustainability is essential. So, I really support the responsible maintenance of aging schools, as well as these beautiful new ones, and I believe in aligning our facilities' plans with environmental goals, such as energy efficiency, for example. Third one, engaging thoughtfully in fiscal realities. I believe, from my understanding, we have a projected deficit in fiscal year '27. So, for me, that's a critical area that needs attention. The town will need a clear, long-term financial plan. I believe we can achieve this through clear communication, aligning budget decisions with strategic priorities, and advocating for the resources, I'm, I'm at time?
You're at time.
Okay. Of the school. So, anyway, to jump to the bottom, at the heart of all this is really my simple beliefs that strong public schools strengthen our entire community, so I'd be grateful to contribute. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you very much. The first person to ask questions is Dr. Allison Anapi.
Thank you. So, understanding that things may change between now and then, at this time, are you planning to run for a school committee in the spring? And what role do you see yourself serving in the upcoming override?
I think of this as a transition role. I'm currently not intending to seek election at this time. In terms of my role, I believe, I don't know the details of it. I'm in a learning space, certainly it would be new for me, but I believe I would try to bring my, my professional experience when it comes to kind of collaborative working and, and focus on transparency in support to the initiative.
Thank you.
Yeah, if that answers the question.
Schlickman?
What's the biggest challenge facing the district, and how would you address it as a school committee member?
The three that I outlined...
One, please. Pick one.
The fiscal planning, I think, right now is probably what I would require most attention. How I would face that, I think through the, bringing the experience that I have from my professional background, I'm, in my role, I constantly juggle competing priorities and bringing people together. I feel like I could contribute some of that sort of strategic experience in that space. It's not the most exciting thing to think about, the fiscal planning, but it's certainly one of the most important ones.
Thank you. Ms. Gillison?
I'm gonna bury it up a little bit, because I feel like you just basically gave the answer to the question I've been asking. When you're faced with these competing priorities, for example, special education, enrollment growth, staffing facilities, how would you approach making those decisions that require trade-offs?
I think that it's really about listening and understanding the complexity of the issues at hand. It's unrealistic to expect that you'll be able to please everyone all the time, so I think it's really about being considerate and thoughtful and making sure that we are understanding the impact of the actions that we're taking.
Thank you.
My question is, are there, to your knowledge, are there any conflicts of interest that would prevent you from serving on the school committee?
Not that I'm aware.
Prevent or restrict?
Prevent or restrict?
No, no conflicts.
Yeah, I said I gotta give you the script beforehand, otherwise I... Ms. Exton?
So, as I've said before, the person appointed this evening would be filling a vacancy typically filled in a townwide election. So, could you share a little bit about what you believe qualifies you to understand and serve the will and interests of the people of Arlington?
It is a difficult place to be. I think that is something I struggle with, the idea of, of not being elected. But I think with, with a commitment to, to really not, not using this as, as a way to kind of get in unelected, to sort of get a, get an, like, a leg up to be a part of the school committee, but really seeing this as a transition role and understanding that it's about advancing the strategic plan and not personal goal. It's building on the work that the committee's already been doing, I think, is the key here.
Thank you.
Mr. Carden?
Yes, so I think you've touched on it a little bit, but again, giving you the opportunity to talk about your involvement in town and school affairs, including specifically any override and debt exclusion campaigns.
So, the first part of the question is, I'm gonna talk a little bit more about the PT, I was talking to someone about it earlier. I've been very involved in the PTO, and I'm picking things that I think nobody else wants to do. I've picked the lost and found job, not very glamorous, but it is really an amazing eye-opening opportunity for me to sort of, on the one hand, keep things organized and be organized, which helps me clear my brain, but also really, one of the amazing things that we've been able to do through kind of organizing the lost and found initiative and washing clothes and making sure they're donateable, is actually contributing to the Spy Ponder Closet right out here, which I'm very proud of. And the other question was about budget. Sorry, can you repeat that, other question?
Just about the override campaigns and debt exclusion campaigns that we've had in the past.
Oh, I have a note about how I would approach that. I don't know the details of it. I am aware there's a deficit, but I think the way that I would approach it... I am aware there's a deficit, but I think the way that I would approach it is through transparency, collaboration, and alignment of the strategic priorities I was talking about earlier. I think, you know, the families, the community needs clear information about the potential override, and so, yeah, I think that's where I would contribute my expertise in navigating those tough waters.
Thank you very much.
Oh, that was it? Okay, thank you very much.
Yeah, I think I got the order right that time. Thank you. Next, Katie Peterson.
Hello. Thank you so much for having me tonight. My name's Katie Peterson. If you're looking to appoint the candidate who's most dedicated to public education, look no further than the one who voluntarily spends most of her time with middle schoolers. Whenever I'm making small talk with a new acquaintance, and I say I'm a middle school teacher, the response invariably is, wow, that's a tough age. And it is. But I'm sure you've heard the saying that teaching is a calling. That's true. You have to be called to this vocation, not least because of the endless six sevens you must endure. But in addition to being the calling, teaching requires dedication, constant reflection, and hard work. It requires sacrifice, and it requires a deep belief in and devotion to the institution of public education. Over the course of my 12 years in public schools, my teaching and leadership experience has led to a myriad of transferable skills for a position on the school committee, including fostering relationships with all stakeholders, a commitment to equity, and data-driven collaborative decision-making. First, a cornerstone of my work has been my ability to cultivate and sustain collaborative relationships with students, families, and colleagues. For six years, I served as a team leader. Coordinating a cohort of more than 200 students and their teachers required effective collaboration and liaising among students, staff, families, and administration. I maintained a proactive and consistent communication and built trust and partnership with all stakeholders to ensure every student's academic and social-emotional needs were met. Secondly, a deep belief in and commitment to equity shapes my work and my worldview. I haven't just supported district-wide equity initiatives, I founded and led an anti-racist educators group that evolved into a district-wide team and an equity leadership position. Through this work, I planned and facilitated school and district-wide professional development with the goal of making our schools and classrooms more diverse and welcoming, where all students could feel a sense of belonging and achieve rigorous learning goals. This means I have direct experience planning and facilitating the systemic change required to make schools and classrooms more inclusive and equitable. Finally, throughout my career, I've developed skills for effective, data-driven, and collaborative decision-making. In my role as an eighth-grade literacy specialist, managing our Tier Two Literacy Intervention Program requires me to analyze data, identify specific student growth areas, design evidence-based solutions, and measure their effectiveness. This data-to-action approach, analyzing a challenge, designing a targeted intervention, and evaluating the results, is precisely the mindset needed for sound decisions at the school committee level. My experience alongside school committee members on hiring and curriculum review committees further deepened my understanding of successful governance and operational oversight. I know what it takes to build consensus and drive effective implementation. All this being said, I'm not just an educator, I'm also a proud citizen of this town. I'm a mom to a first grader and a preschooler, a coach with Arlington Soccer Club. I canvassed for voter turnout during the 2023 Budget Override Campaign, and I even taught for a year in Arlington Sister City in Japan, and have maintained friendships and a deep appreciation for the partnership between our schools and theirs. I love living in Arlington, and I'm proud to send my children to school here. It would be a tremendous honor to bring my unique skills, insights, and experiences to the school committee. I appreciate your time and consideration. Thank you.
Thank you very much. You get to go.
I'm sorry.
Ms. Schlickman goes first.
Oh, I thought you went first before.
No, that was Dr. Allison Ampe.
Ms. Schlickman goes first.
Yeah. I'm glad I'm not running this. What's the biggest challenge facing the district, and how would you address it as a school committee member?
So I think that there are sort of two things that have been addressed quite a bit tonight. The first is the budget, obviously, and the second is equitable access for all students. And I think that those are intrinsically entwined.
You gotta pick one. I'm a pushy New Yorker, I'm gonna...
That's fine. I'm happy to choose. I'm happy to choose. Well, being a teacher, I have to say that obviously equitable access to education and excellence is important, the most important for any school district. But I would look forward to learning more about the things that it takes to reach that.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Gillison?
I'll give you an opportunity to talk about what Paul didn't let you talk about. What do you see as the school committee's core responsibilities around the district budget? And how familiar are you with APS's current financial situation?
So I have to say that I don't know much about the current financial situation, but I do know that it's the school committee's job to approve a budget. I will say that this is probably getting ahead of myself, but in the interest of full transparency, my husband is a teacher within the district, so I would positive, like proactively recuse myself from discussions involving teacher salary and benefits. But that being said, I don't think that would prevent me from giving input in terms of overall budget, and I would be happy to talk or think a little bit about, like, sort of the day-to-day way that the budget impacts teaching and learning, from my own experience.
Thank you.
Thank you. To your knowledge, do you have any conflict of interest that would prevent or restrict your participation in the school committee?
Yes, I have a spouse who works in the district as a teacher. It doesn't prevent me from serving, I believe, according to the law, but I would happily recuse myself from any discussions involving teacher benefits or salary.
Thank you very much. Ms. Exton?
So as I've mentioned a few times, you would be filling a position that's typically filled in a townwide election. So what qualifies you to understand and serve the will and interests of the people of Arlington?
Yeah, I'm really glad that you asked that, because I sort of feel like that's a core tension in terms of applying for this position, because I think that the role of the school committee, it's of the utmost importance that you're kind of representing what the community's hopes and goals and visions are for their schools. So to me, I think that it's really important, similar to what I believe someone else said, but that to listen to all of you, because you've all been elected and you all have your, you know, initiatives and things that you're working on and goals, I would really be interested in hearing more about those. And I also think it's really important to get out in the community and talk to people. I have a lot of relationships through my coaching and through my son's schools and just neighbors, right? So I think that it's really important to sort of hear what people think and collect as much information as possible to guide the decision-making.
Thank you.
Mr. Carden?
Thank you. And you have, you did touch on it, but I'll give you another opportunity to talk about your involvement in the town or school affairs, including specifically any override or debt exclusion campaign.
Sure. Yeah, so I'm pretty involved. I haven't served on any PTO, but I've been at school quite a bit, you know, as a parent of a preschooler and an elementary school kiddo. But also, when we had the 2023 Budget Override Campaign, I sort of informally canvassed for votes. It was obviously, you know, personally to me, really important for my children's education and also for my family. But also, I know the importance, one thing that I wanted to highlight for people that I knew, is that the importance of using the budget, or some of the budget, to implement the new literacy curriculum. Like, I can see firsthand in my role the importance of that, and I had a kid going into kindergarten, so I knew that it was vital for that to be implemented as soon as possible. So that really motivated me to help get out the vote for that override.
Great, thank you.
So, understanding that things may change between now and then, at this time, are you planning to run for the school committee in the spring? And what role do you see yourself serving in the upcoming override?
I would be interested in running for school committee in the spring. I think that it would be helpful to have some continuity in this position. And regardless of whether I'm appointed or elected, I would absolutely be involved in getting out the vote for the budget override. I think that getting some information out to voters and really making it clear that what the budget override would serve is really important, and I think that I'll be involved in that either way.
That's it, I think. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Catherine Khan? Thank you so much.
Okay, hi. Thank you so much for letting me come speak. I'm Catherine Khan. I'm the mom of two kids in grades three and one in Arlington Public Schools. I guess my interest in being a school committee member comes from two places. First, you know, being a parent, of course, I would love to be part of an organization that's, you know, trying to ensure that we're doing the most we can, you know, to give our kids and teachers and schools and staff, you know, all the opportunities and support that they need. Also, it comes from a place of gratitude, because when we moved here four years ago, my son was at a preschool in Somerville and was having a really hard time. And he managed to get into Monotomy, like, right below us, and the teachers there, Principal Joyce, were able to really turn it around and help him love going to school, which is, I think, the biggest gift you can give a kid. So coming from public schools in Tennessee, you know, I was so impressed with the public school system here, and I still am. My daughter was able to go to Monotomy, too, and they're both now at Thompson. I've been active in Thompson, I've been in Monotomy, too. I think I've been a room rep six times. I really like supporting teachers. I was a teacher. I've been active in a variety of different PTO activities, and I've also given some lessons in the class when they happen to be covering a subject that I'm familiar with in some way, and that's actually been, those are my favorite bits and pieces. Professionally, the other part of why I'm interested in this role is I work in education policy and evaluation. I'm an econometrician, which basically just means I study cause and effect. So, you know, schools, districts, departments of education will come to me, my organization, and ask, you know, is this math curriculum gonna work for our eighth graders? Or, like, we did this teacher training program, and we wanna know, like, is it giving us the outcomes that we hoped for? And so in my work, in that way, I do a lot of stuff behind the scenes, analyzing data, but I also do a lot of work in schools. So focus groups with students and teachers and principals and district staff, trying to figure out, you know, did this policy or program, like, how did it actually work for you in practice? So I guess my hope is that some of my experience and my professional life could, you know, spill over into serving this community. Wow, I actually did that faster than I thought it would. Is my time up?
You have another 40 seconds.
Wow, that's great. All right, well, let me think of a couple other things that I'd like to say.
No need.
No need, that was good. That was a little nugget, extra time for questions? I don't know. I don't know that I want that.
All right, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
The first question goes to Ms. Gillison.
What do you see as the school committee's core responsibilities around the district budget, and how familiar are you with APS's current financial situation?
I'm not particularly familiar with the financial situation, apart from saying that, I guess, you know, there are some constraints and limitations, and I think that kind of links to your first question, which is actually, you know, looking at the budget, you know, do we think that it's equitable, you know, in terms of school allocations, in terms of, you know, thinking about kids with, you know, special needs and/or developmental issues? So I guess, yeah, I think the biggest, one of the biggest issues is looking at the budget with an equity lens, but, you know, also thinking about the future. What do we wanna invest in now that may pay off later? Thinking a lot about technology in the classroom, worrying about AI. What are we teaching our kids now that, you know, we wanna make sure that they know? Because they're gonna be in a whole different world than we are, than we were.
Thank you.
Thank you, I have to go next. To your knowledge, do you have any conflict of interest that would prevent or restrict you from participating in school committee work?
I don't, not to my knowledge.
Thank you very much. Ms. Exton?
What qualifies you to understand and serve the will and interests of the people of Arlington?
I mean, I guess I'm sort of similar to everybody else, you know. I have a strong love of this community. We kind of happened into living here. When we were desperate for a house, we were in a one-bedroom apartment in Somerville, and just ended up in Arlington and have absolutely loved it, and just how open everyone is. I would take it upon myself to, given that I would just be sort of joining this role for just a short amount of time, I would still like to take it upon myself to, if possible, I don't know what these rules and regulations are, but I would love to do focus groups of parents and schools, or figure out some way to talk to the community in a way that's representative, to try to, you know, hear a lot about what they're interested in and what their priorities are, to make sure that I'm representing everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carden?
And like everyone else, you've spoken about this already, but I'll give you another opportunity to talk about your involvement in town and school affairs, including specifically any of the override and debt exclusion campaigns that we've had.
Okay. I have not been involved in past override campaigns, apart from voting. I would be interested in being involved, and I've canvassed for other, on other issues, but I have not canvassed for the overriding, the override campaign. In terms of my other activities in Arlington, well, so I've worked, I've volunteered in the schools, as I talked a little bit about, in terms of room rep, a bunch of different parent-teacher organization activities, organized fall festivals and that kind of stuff. And on top of that, my only, I'd say my only other role in the community has been with Friends of Spy Pond and some cleanup activities with my kids.
Thank you.
Dr. Allison Ampe?
Understanding that things may change between now and then, at this time, are you planning to run for school committee in the spring? And what role do you see yourself serving in the upcoming override?
Yeah, in a little bit what I said before, I could imagine, I could imagine that I would canvas in the upcoming override, but beyond that, I'm not sure. And I would be interested in potentially, you know, trying to be elected for a school committee member, you know, in a three-year term. It's not something I had been planning, but when this opportunity came up, and I started reading about the duties and saw how well they overlapped with some of the work that I'm doing, and just, I got excited about it, I guess. So it's something that I'm thinking about, yeah.
Thank you. Ms. Schlickman?
What's the biggest challenge facing the district, and how would you address it as a school committee member? Only get one.
I know. Well, I feel like I can't answer you honestly, because I feel like if I was in it, you know, I might, in it with you, I might be able to answer you better. I would say from my perspective, as a parent, and it's been said before, but I would say equity, and I speak from, you know, having kids in, you know, one of the only Title I school in Arlington. I guess it's just Hardy and Thompson, right? And so seeing some equity issues just in my own school, and then seeing, you know, just in terms of what parents are facing. And then seeing, you know, from my son's perspective, with an IEP, some equity issues just among kids with, you know, special needs. So that would probably be my overriding, you know, instinct would be to say, that's what I think of first, but I wish I had some data to back that up.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Okay, all right, thanks.
That's everybody, right?
That's everybody, yeah. So our next candidate is Dmitry Vasilev.
Hello, my name is Dmitry Vasilev. I hope you remember me.
If you could speak up a little louder.
Okay, so, is it okay?
Yeah.
I hope you remember me. I presented here multiple times. And I, so I'm a PhD from MIT, but I also have a secondary degree in education. So I'm sort of, so I'm a professional data scientist and statistician. So kind of, I live and die in numbers. So, but I, why I'm here is, it's because I'm a parent of three wonderful children, and I care for them, and I care for, and I really care about the children. That's why I kind of pursued education in pedagogy and psychology. And also, yes, I ran half a year ago for a school committee, and actually, out of all voters, over a quarter of people voted for me, which is, I think it's, I didn't, it wasn't expected for me, and I, it was, I think, for a newcomer and person who didn't think of voting a year prior, is not bad. And I think that my message resonated with a lot of voters. So, and I think I can contribute to this committee in several ways. One, as a parent, so I'm very connected with struggles of modern-day kids, and I'm empathetic. And I'm really, I'm kind of terrified of what these kids await in the future, the kind of, like, the current mental health epidemic, and just, yeah. And from another hand, I can help you with a lot of making sense of these numbers. And for example, the MCAS scores, right? As Mr. Schlickman very rightfully said, like, when you look at the map of MCAS scores in Massachusetts, what we see is a wealth map. So it's basically, but there is, so like, is that when we say, like, what is the performance, right? We can correct for this. So there is a, there are, like, there are statistical methods which, basically, given the factors, can we, can see contributing factors and slice-and-dice information. And also... and slice-and-dice information. And, and also, we can get a lot of information, make sense of these numbers. This is what I can help with. And, well, there is a, there is a, yeah, a lot of things which I mentioned and here and.
You have 10 seconds.
Yeah, in, in this capacity. And I hope that I can help you and thank you for your attention.
Thank you very much. My question to you is, to your knowledge, do you have any conflict of interest that would prevent or restrict your participation in school committee matters?
Not that I can think of.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Exson.
What qualifies you to understand and serve the will and interests of the people of Arlington?
Well, I, I, I have, my kids are school age and that's, that's what I'm interested in, yeah. That's, that's basic. I see, I kind of, I, I see myself being a voice of children.
Thank you.
So, you mentioned your, your run for, for school committee, but I'll give you the chance to talk about any other, talk about that or any other involvement in town and school affairs, including specifically any override or debt exclusion campaigns that we've had.
Yeah, this is my first involvement in, in politics. And it was kind of totally something I didn't plan to. Much, much like coming here in the United States. If you would ask me two years prior I came here, I had no idea.
Thank you. Dr. Allison Happy.
Understanding that things may change between now and then, at this time, are you planning to run for school committee in the spring? And what role do you see yourself serving in the upcoming override?
Yeah, this is a question about running. I was dreading. I don't know. I, I really loved running for the school committee. And I, yeah, I see worried face in Mr. Schickman's. I, I, I do not yet, I am not yet decided. I, I just like.
I'm not lucky to intimidate anybody.
Mr. Schickman.
If I was, I'd do that. I learned that as a middle school person. I just lost my question. What is the biggest challenge in the, in the district? And how would you address it as a school committee member? I just want to make sure I say the same way.
I think the challenge is the, the, basically the conflict between the equity and meeting kids where they are. It's basically, we have a curve of abilities, especially when it comes to curriculum. And in my opinion, our curriculum is pretty low, especially in math and science. But because of this curve, we are forced to address, to help, to focus on kids who are underperforming. And that's a challenge. That's a challenge. And I have to tell you, this is an important challenge, so I was struggling with it. And so, that's, that would be number one for me. I understand the budgetary trouble. And so, but one, one is that, yes. So, meeting kids where they are.
Equity, equity and meeting, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Skittleson.
What do you see as the school committee's core responsibilities around the district budget and how familiar are you with APS's current financial situation?
Yes, I know that the situation is that there is a shortfall. And I can help in, I can help in balancing this numerically. That said, I would maybe make unpopular decisions. For example, de-prioritize, like, real estate, for example.
I'm sorry, I missed what you said. Prioritize what?
De-prioritize real estate, like, any kind of, like, money for construction. And so, basically, the, the, when, in investments, say, in real estate, when it's, when it's, when it's in conflict of, say, investment in, in curriculum and in teachers, I would actually go for the latter. And, but this is an example, and, I mean, I, this is the kind of tasks I, I do a lot in my professional life.
Thank you, sir. Thank you very much. I think we're closed on the question. Yeah. So, the next, next person is Mr. Harris, Justin Harris.
Hello. I will try to keep this really short because, as Ms. Exson has pointed out, this isn't a campaign speech. We're not being elected. And I just want to share why I think that I could be of help to the school committee. I am a parent of an eighth grader at Audison. We came from Hardy. Love the new principal at Audison, by the way. So glad that you guys got her. I think the, the thing, one of the things I could bring is that I do have a PhD in developmental psychology. I studied the science of learning. As a professional, I work in after-school time learning. So, I was at the Museum of Science for several years. I was in charge of a after-school and summer camp program where we did STEM learning. And I did curriculum design for that program. So, I'm familiar with doing nonprofit budgeting, strategic planning, curriculum design. I think that I could have some insight into the kinds of things that the committees have to support here. And I am really grateful for what it's like to be a student here at, in Arlington Public Schools. I want to make sure that everybody has the same great experience that my kid has had. He was on an IEP. He recently stepped down to a 504 this year because of the strides that he made, because of the support that he has had at these schools. And I just want to make sure that everybody is able to, to have that same kind of experience.
Thank you very much. First question goes to Ms. Exson.
Oh, well, you've learned my question now. What qualifies you to understand and serve the will and interests of the people of Arlington?
It's, it's a really good question because of, of how this role is getting filled. I think, on one hand, I'm, like I said, not trying to campaign on any issues. I'm not trying to push anything in particular. I want to make sure that you guys can get the work done that you are already doing since you all were elected by the town. As far as getting to understand the will of the people, part of what I've done in my roles, in particular with the organization was at last, was develop our evaluation system to be able to get feedback from parents about what they thought of our program. So, I'd like to find some ways to use those skills to make sure that we are able to hear from the people that we're serving and to make sure that we're doing exactly what they want.
Thank you.
Ms. Carden.
Thank you. So, can you tell me about your involvement in the town or school affairs, including specifically any override or debt exclusion campaigns that we've had?
Sure. Well, I voted in favor of them, but was not involved otherwise. I am an educator. I'm passionate about education. I, it's how I want our money spent. So, very much in favor. I've not been involved in any town governance, but as a lot of people here were, I was a member of the PTO at my kid's elementary school, so Hardy Elementary. I was involved in their equity group. So, for one of their professional development days, we created some plans for them to work on their equity learning and professional development. That's also something that I do in my roles is create professional development for educators. And that's it.
Great, thank you. Dr. Allison Happy.
Understanding that things may change between now and then, at this time, do you, are you planning to run for school committee in the spring? And what role do you see yourself serving in the upcoming override?
So, I was not planning on getting involved in the override, but if I am selected, I think that would need to change since you're involved in setting the budgets that are involved in that. And I would be planning to run again in the spring.
Mr. Schickman.
What's the biggest challenge facing the district and how would you address it as a school committee member?
I think this is a really good question. And, you know, aside from the budget, which is an obvious one since there's some issues there, I think there's some challenges around trust, not because there's distrust in the community, but because there's been a lot of change recently. You know, we have a relatively new superintendent. There's been changes in the leadership at the different schools. And there's a lot of concerns around how decisions are made for IEPs and getting on them. I've, I've heard a lot of people expressing a lot of concern and fear about that. And I think that the biggest thing that needs to happen is just more insight into how decisions are made and what the plans are. It's not that there aren't good decisions being made. It's not that we don't have the, the supports that we need for our students. It's that parents don't understand all of the processes and decisions that are going on. And I do public science communications, so I'd like to think that I could share with them in a way that they would understand some of how things are happening and why they are.
Thank you.
Thank you.
What, what do you see as the school committee's core responsibilities around the, excuse me, district budget? And how familiar are you with APS's current financial situation?
Not super familiar, but I know we're facing a shortfall. And I know that several members of the committee ran specifically on a platform of making sure that there would be another override and that we were able to pay our teachers fairly. I think that is a really important priority. They are the people day in, day out, taking care of our kids. We are trusting them to make sure that they are safe, that they are learning, that they are included. And they do a really good job and they deserve to be compensated fairly for that. And I think part of the school committee is making sure that we are reflecting how people want the tax money that's being levied on them, spent with regards to the school, while making sure that, you know, everything is running the way that it needs to, that our kids are all learning.
Thank you.
My question is, to your knowledge, do you have any conflict of interest that would prevent or restrict your ability to participate in school committee work?
Not right now. As I said, I work in out-of-school time stuff and I am in the job hunt. So, if that changes, I'll let you guys know.
That was an honest answer. Thank you very much. Good luck in the search. Okay.
Thank you.
The next candidate is Jeff Miller. Mr. Miller.
Hello. I want to start off by thanking the committee for its time and to express my gratitude that we have such a strong group of applicants for this vacancy. I'm Jeff Miller, a bishop, parent of two, and I attended public schools throughout my childhood, so I have a great appreciation for the benefits of public education. My business career has spanned two decades in strategy, finance, and governance, all skills relevant to the committee's role of oversight and guidance. I have served on 14 corporate and nonprofit boards, including the Arlington Libraries Foundation. My work with the libraries has been motivated by values shared by this committee, including civic engagement, promoting literacy, and investing in equitable and open spaces for our community. Throughout my career, I've been tasked with analyzing data, building consensus, and weighing trade-offs to make investment choices with scarce resources. As the committee discusses budget options from the superintendent that range from level funding with modest service cuts to draconian funding reductions in the case of a failed override, I can contribute my experience in making informed and rational decisions to help align spending with strategic goals. I also believe that the committee should take a more intentional role in overseeing technology choices in our schools. Over the past decade, there have been three technology waves that have fundamentally transformed the experience of being a student at APS. The first was smartphones, which arrived in school in a trickle and then a flood, while school policies around the country took years to catch up to mitigate the harms to social interaction, engagement, mental health, and academic achievement. I have been engaged at local, state, and nationwide levels to support efforts for bell-to-bell phone-free schools. And despite progress in APS, there's still more work to do. The second technological wave was one-to-one Chromebooks and iPads, which increased dramatically in 2020 out of necessity due to the pandemic. While the crisis demanded action, in the aftermath, we owe it to our students to offer careful scrutiny of which technological tools benefit students and APS's strategic goals and which run counter to them. The third and most recent wave is currently crashing upon us in the form of AI. This has the potential to be the most transformative to our educational system, our economy, and our society as a whole. And we owe it to our students to understand the technology, ask the right questions, and consult on policies and practices being implemented in our schools. Oversight is critical to ensure that we arrive at a balance that supports the goals and values of our community and appropriately weighs the potential risks that are already becoming apparent. Without near-term changes, I fear that this wave will wash over us without the committee's input. Neighboring districts such as Malden have established a technology subcommittee to review and consult with the superintendent on these topics. I believe Arlington would benefit from a similar approach or by having a community relations session specifically on technology. Thank you for your attention. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. The first question goes to Mr. Carden.
Thank you. So, again, giving you, you get the opportunity to talk more about your involvement in town and school affairs, including specifically any override or debt exclusion campaigns that we've had.
Sure. As I mentioned, I've been involved with the Arlington Libraries Foundation for seven years along with, with Alham. I have been a grassroots leader within Arlington around technology issues. I've led wait-until-eighth initiatives, waiting until at least eighth grade for giving, giving children smartphones across the, across the district. We have 450 people who have signed that pledge to wait until at least the end of eighth grade to give their kid a smartphone. And I have a community group within Arlington with over 750 people that is interested, that discusses technology issues, some in schools, some outside of schools, but as it relates to parenting. So, I think that, that's, that's a couple of the ways I've been involved.
Thank you.
Oh, and as it relates to the override, I have not historically participated in the override. I think this year, given, given this particular role as well as the library foundation role, I'm, I'm intending to be more involved with it.
Thank you. Dr. Allison Happy.
Okay. I'm going to repeat my question. You can repeat your answer if you want. Understanding that things may change between now and then, are you planning to run for school committee in the spring? And what role do you see yourself serving in the upcoming override?
Sure. At this point, I am not planning on running in the spring. And as it relates to the override, as I mentioned, I, I expect that I'll have more involvement this time around. I had not previously participated in prior overhauls.
Mr. Schickman.
What is the biggest challenge facing the district and how would you address it as a school committee member?
Sure. The, the greatest challenge facing the district, especially in the term of this vacancy, is the budget, far and away. As, as I said, the, the level funding with modest service cuts to draconian funding options in the, in the case of a failed override, that's a significant issue even in the best-case scenario. So, I think I would be involved in, in, in reviewing the budget, reviewing the choices made to align with the strategic priorities of Arlington, and helping vote on a budget that, that accomplishes the, the committee's goals as well as the, the overall strategic plans.
Thanks.
When faced with competing priorities, special education, enrollment growth, staffing, facilities, or others, how would you, how do you or how have you approached making trade-offs?
Sure. So, I, I reviewed the budget committee, or sorry, the, the budget memo that Dr. Homan circulated to, to her staff. And so, I understand that part of the budgeting process is both understanding the costs as well as the impact of various initiatives within, within the schools. So, I think really, understanding the costs, measuring against the impact, and weighing those, making trade-offs is, is how I would, is how I would approach it. There's not one, one or the other of those that will be given priority no matter what. It will all be in accordance with the strategic plan and then weighed against the costs and benefits.
To your knowledge, do you have any conflict of interest that would impede or restrict your ability to participate in school committee matters?
I do not.
Ms. Exson.
Thank you. As someone who would potentially be appointed to a position that is typically elected, what qualifies you to understand and serve the will and interests of the people of Arlington?
Sure. So, first of all, I'd say that what, what Arlington people most want in this, in this next few months' bridge role to, to an election is someone who's a steady hand and can take in a lot of information, make rational decisions about, about important decisions like the budget. So, I'll be a steady hand in that capacity. As it relates to other issues that people care about in town, as I mentioned, the technology issues are something that many people in Arlington care about, especially as it relates to education. And I have been a leader in that area. I've worked with state legislators, local legislators, with Dr. Homan on school policies. And I have a large number of people that support the efforts that we're doing in that area.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The next presenter is, the next candidate is Crystal Haynes-Capathorn.
Hi, everybody. Good evening. I'm Crystal Haynes-Capathorn, and I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak to you tonight. I come before you not only as a longtime communicator and educator, but a deeply invested Arlington parent, a community builder, and someone who has worked closely with families across this town to help ensure that every child feels a sense of belonging in our schools. My son, James, he's over there, is four years old and on the verge of entering kindergarten. And as a mother, I'm stepping forward because I want him and every child in Arlington to grow up in a school system where they feel safe, supported, represented, and empowered. My husband, Jonathan, has been a public school history teacher for 14-plus years. school history teacher for 14-plus years, and his family has lived in Arlington for just about four generations, James being the fifth. This town's history and its future are woven directly in our family. A major part of my commitment to Arlington has been hands-on equity and community-building work. As a former commissioner on the Arlington Human Rights Commission, I helped lead our town through some of its most difficult conversations during a global pandemic, during local and national racial reckonings, and during moments when our community needed space to listen, learn, and reflect together. I helped lead the town's community conversation series with the Department of Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion, facilitated difficult but powerful discussions designed to deepen understanding across identities, build trust among residents, and create a shared language around belonging. Now, these conversations affirmed for me that school committees thrive when people feel heard, respected, and that they're part of something larger. I also created the Arlington Black History Month Banner Project, which brings public art into the center of this town every February to celebrate Black history, excellence, and resilience. As a former chair of the annual Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Birthday Celebration Committee here in town, I did that same work, and I was called to help found the Arlington Black Joy Project. And this is where I listened directly to Black families and other families of color about their experiences in our schools. Through these conversations, I heard stories of celebration and success, but I also heard concerns about belonging, curriculum representation, communication, and challenges students face when they do not always see themselves represented in the classroom. Now, those experiences shaped my belief that equity, and I think we need to broaden what we are sort of deciding what that definition is here in this room, specifically with what folks have been talking about in Arlington, is not abstract. It is lived in the daily experiences of all of our children. Professionally, I bring more than 20 years of broadcast journalism experience as an Emmy Award-winning journalist, where I have learned to listen carefully, communicate clearly, and uplift the voices that are often overlooked. I do this quickly, learning on my feet. Today, as the Senior Director of Communications at United Way of Massachusetts Bay, I work across education, early childhood, and community impact, collaborating with school districts and families throughout Massachusetts, even on the legislative level. I also teach at Northeastern University, I'm sorry?
You only have 10 seconds left.
Okay. I teach at Northeastern University and Simmons University, and if important to this school committee, I bring these three core commitments: to champion equity and belonging for every student, strengthen community trust and communication, and build bridges and collaborate. Thank you so much. I'm happy to take questions.
Thank you very much. The first question goes to Dr. Allison Ebbey.
Thank you. So, understanding that things may change between now and then, at this time, are you planning to run for school committee in the spring, and what role do you see yourself serving in the upcoming override?
Yes, I plan on running for the full term, and also, I think my role in the override would be one of participating to the extent that this position allows it, and also to make sure that I'm listening to the concerns of the folks here in the community.
Thank you. Ms. Schlickman?
What's the biggest challenge facing the district and how would you address it as a school committee member?
I think belonging is the biggest problem here. I think people are extremely siloed in town. I have the benefit of listening to a lot of folks from a lot of different generations, and I think people think of their community as their school community and not as their community as Arlington writ large, and even the students we invite in our community being the MECCO students, which often get left out of this conversation completely. And so I think belonging and having that sense of belonging, not just to your school community, but to your entire Arlington community, is the biggest problem and because we make decisions based upon our school committees and not communities, excuse me, and not across the entire town.
Thanks.
What do you see as the school committee's core responsibilities around the district budget, and how familiar are you with the APS current financial situation?
Well, I mean, I think first and foremost, I think we always are hoping to balance the budget, right? But when we can't, making sure that first and foremost, the needs of our students are paramount, and I mean all of our students, our special needs students, of course, you know, folks who are also wanting this position, talked about our special needs students, but also our students of color and low-income community students, people who are being hit most, especially as we see shifting federal policies that are really hurting the students who are coming into our classrooms right now. So I think it's extraordinarily important that we keep that top of mind. We get folks, you know, to put it for a metaphor, we feed folks and then we worry about the rest of it later. So I think that that's, as we go into trying to work on our fiscal situation, we make sure that we meet the needs of everyone first, and then we work about the rest of it later.
Thank you.
My question is, to your knowledge, do you have any conflict of interest that would prevent or restrict your ability to participate in school committee work?
I don't have a conflict of interest that would prevent or restrict that work. I will say, in the interest of full disclosure, Mrs. Diggins is my husband's aunt, and
We were doing so well.
You can't, listen, you can't, you can't throw a stone without hitting someone connected to the Capathorn family in Arlington. I'm going to tell you this right now, and my brother-in-law, Bill Capathorn, is the town engineer, or assistant town engineer.
Is the town what?
Engineer.
Engineer. Okay, great. Thank you. Thank you very much. Ms. Exton?
You've touched on this, but what qualifies you to understand and serve the will and interests of the people of Arlington?
I think because I've done it since I joined the Arlington Human Rights Commission in 2019 and then continued to volunteer with that body when I stepped down from the official role. I've literally talked to folks in town and made sure that at their most vulnerable moments, where we have our biggest tension points, that they felt heard and respected. I would say especially around the murder of George Floyd, and we had nightly stands and the Arlington Human Rights Commission was called to lead in that space and to heal some rifts racially in town. I think hearing from folks from all, across generations that all work toward our future, which is our kids and our students here in town, I think that qualifies me. I think also working within the schools for the Arlington, the Black History Banner Project, which is aimed to create a representative space, and even having young people participate in our banner contest is another way of representation because kids go to our school and they want to feel represented and they had a voice. And also, in bringing people to the Black Joy Project and having the Black families of Arlington, including those who were some of the first in 1968 and 1969, talk about their experiences in town and how they weren't sure of having their children iterate Arlington public schools and having their children feel like even generations on that they don't feel welcome here, really struck me in that moment. Folks who live here and do everything else outside of town but only live here in town on principle, I think that that is really where I think hearing those voices that often exist in town but don't get represented in spaces like this, frankly, it allows me to feel like in this point, I can serve this role. Thank you.
And you've talked a lot about it, but I'll give you, with everyone else, I'll give you the opportunity to talk again about your involvement in town and school affairs, including specifically any override or debt exclusion campaigns that we've had.
I haven't been involved in the override at all to date, outside of being a resident that votes. I will say, my involvement in town is connected to my work on the Arlington Human Rights Commission, the MLK Committee, and then also volunteering in different spaces, ACMI, and making sure that, you know, we are represented in town.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next candidate is Heather Leit.
Good evening. I'm Heather Leit. I've been in Arlington for, since 2013. I have a fourth grader at the Stratton Elementary School, and the reason we stayed in Arlington, my husband and I are both transplants to the state of Massachusetts, and we stayed in Arlington for the schools, for the community that we built here.
Did you just move that? Sorry. Just move it closer.
For the community that we built here. My son attended daycare at Little Sprouts on Pleasant Street, and we built a strong community here, and when we decided to buy a house, we ended up staying in Arlington for the community that we built and the schools. We are at Stratton Elementary. We live on Mountain Avenue, right down the street from Stratton, and my son is not having a great experience at Stratton. He has a 504 plan, and he is struggling. He has ADHD, and I am intimately involved with the school. All his teachers have actually been really fantastic. It's just been a real struggle, and I think that we've all mentioned this, I think all the candidates, that providing an education that is equitable for all is incredibly important. And so that is why I'm interested in being involved. I think my biggest endorsement is from my son. Recently, at the beginning of school, he had to write who his hero was, and he said, "His mommy," because I support him when he is sad, when people are mean to him. I help him be happy, and I help him be him. That's what he said, and I want that for all kids, and I think it's important to have all aspects. I believe Arlington public schools are amazing. I'm a product of public schools, and I want to be part of making it better. So, that's all I have to say. Questions?
Thank you very much. The first question goes to Mr. Schlickman.
Thank you. What's the biggest challenge facing the district and how would you address it as a school committee member?
Sure. There's a lot of challenges, but all of them can be solved with money. I think budgeting and money is the most important aspect of any public school. I'm a fundraiser. I have spent the last 25 years of my career fundraising for nonprofits because money is essential to keep things going, and I think that knowing when to make cuts and when to make changes and when to do the overrides is incredibly important. My brother attended a high school in Michigan and while I was in college, and they did not pass what they called as a millage, so similar to an override, and my brother's, all the athletics went away from his public high school. All of the art programs went away from his public high school. He spent three and a half hours a day for two years going to public high school. That was the limit Michigan allowed when the millage didn't pass. So I have seen firsthand what happens when there's no money, and my brother was incredibly impacted by the fact that he received an incredibly poor education from a public school that didn't have the money because the city refused to pass the tax.
Thank you.
I guess this is a good follow-up to that question. What do you see as the school committee's role, core responsibilities, we're different from a nonprofit board in terms of our ability to raise money, around the district budget, and how familiar are you with APS's current financial situation?
I understand there's going to be a shortfall. That's the extent of my knowledge, but I think it's really important. It's a big question, right? Whenever we're talking about the education of children and how money, we don't want to acknowledge that money is an important part of that, and it truly is an important part of that, and the citizens of a town have to be responsible for that, because if we do not have public education, we do not have democracy.
Thank you. To your knowledge, do you have any conflict of interest that prevents you from serving or, or prevent or restrict you from serving on the school committee?
Not that I'm aware of.
Thank you. Ms. Exton?
As someone who would potentially be filling a position held by an elected individual, what qualifies you to understand and serve the will and interests of the people of Arlington?
That's a good question, right? None of us want representation without, or without support, right? That's what we bought the 250th for. So I think that I've built a really strong community here. I volunteered at Stratton on the PTO. I was on the school council from '22 to '23, where we actually looked over the literacy curriculum, and I was a room rep, and I just have a big community, and I think talking to neighbors, other parents in the schools, and understanding their needs is really important.
Thank you.
Thank you. So you've talked a little bit about it, but I'll give you another chance to talk about your involvement in school or town affairs, including specifically the any override or debt exclusion campaigns that we've had.
Sure. When I first moved to Arlington, I actually volunteered with the Young Arlington Collaborative before I had a child, and then I had a child and I volunteered for the PTO, planning events, particularly the Halloween event at Stratton, and I also sat, as I mentioned, on the Stratton School Council, was a room rep as well. And as to the override, I have not, other than unofficially suggesting people vote for it, but I vote for it and supported the last override.
Great. Thank you.
Dr. Allison Ebbey?
And for our final question tonight, understanding that things may change between now and then, at this time, are you planning to run for school committee in spring, and what role do you see yourself serving in the upcoming override?
Yes. I do, at this moment, have plans to run in the spring, and I support the override and would campaign for it if that's permissible. Yes.
Thank you very much. That concludes the presentations and the questions. Now, I'm going to give the committee, if there's anyone who wants to speak to anything before we take a vote. Anybody who wants to make a comment, statement, go ahead.
I just want to say thank you to all of you. When we had to post this position, we had no idea what to expect in terms of interest, and it's really heartening, and I think an example of why I love living in Arlington, that we have like this array of choices in front of us, and I hope that for any of you who are not selected tonight, you don't take that as discouragement. You take what motivated you to be here today and, you know, take whatever next step makes sense for you in involvement, and as you may have gathered from some of us up here, a really great way of getting involved in the future of education and the town in general is to participate in the override campaign. It is a fully volunteer effort, and I hope to see you all there.
Anyone else want to make a comment or statement? Mr. Garden?
Yes, I'd echo what Ms. Goodison said. Thank you all for coming. I came up for an appointment the last time we had an opening, which was a long time ago. I did not get the seat, Mr. Schlickman did, but then I went ahead a few years later to go ahead. I kept being involved in schools, and I was involved before that, but I continued my involvement and then ran successfully. So I would encourage you all, if you don't get the position and you're interested, stay involved with school affairs, join the override, join town meeting, get involved, and there will be openings because I'm not running again. So in two years, there will be another opening for sure. And just one note, you know, in the past, we've had this sort of conflict of, do we choose someone who states they're not going to run for reelection so we don't give them an advantage? That's sort of what the select board did. Last time, we did not choose someone. Mr. Schlickman's still here. He ran for reelection. So to me, that's not, that's not really a factor in my decision at all. It may be different for others, but even if you've said you're not currently leaning towards running and you do get the seat, I do hope you'll consider running because, again, I don't think that, I don't think you're really going to have a huge advantage for a three-month term. Thank you.
Would anyone else like to say anything? Dr. Allison Ebbey?
So, I had to run the last election that Mr. Garden's talking about, and I would point out that the same question that I was asking here was asked then, and Mr. Schlickman kind of equivocated. I, that's neither here nor there.
Let's go to the videotape.
I personally am more likely to vote for someone who has said that they are not intending to run, understanding that that may change, just because I feel like, since the whole town isn't having a chance to weigh in, and since we have such a plethora of excellent candidates, partly that helps narrow you folks down. And second, it just, to me, it feels better, but clearly, we don't all agree. So it's, my vote one way or another is not a So it's, my vote one way or another is not a indication on any of the rest of you. Just that's where I'm coming from. And I hope to be seeing you in the upcoming things. There will be things coming.
That was well framed. Ms. Schlickman?
Well, I would point out that when we had the last vacancy, we had a similar circumstance where one of the members went off to the dark side of the select board, you know? And there was a vacancy as a result. I was a past school committee member. I served two terms from 2001 to 2007. So I was picking up with experience to, to fill out the term. This is, to me, a more critical situation than when I came on because we're four months from a potential override vote. And that is the scariest thing that I'm looking at right now because a failed override or an insufficient override will mean really bad things for this district. We have worked very hard over the past few years since the superintendent came in, develop a strategic plan, to fund a strategic plan, to make things happen. And I don't want to start taking that apart. I had that torture in 2004 when we had a failed override and a 20% reduction in our local aid. So that override is the elephant in the room in my mind. I, I, this, this is a publicly facing job. It is an officer of the town. And civic involvement, participating in elections, being a town meeting member, being involved in the governance and understanding the governance of the, of the town is important in my mind in this short-term seat. If any of you run, we are welcoming. We are prepared to teach you everything we know and learn from you. But to my mind, I think in this critical situation, I'm looking for somebody with extensive civic involvement. There's lots of ways to get it. We have a civic academy in town, run for town meeting. I think that people who run for townwide office should do so after being in town meeting for at least a year or two so you understand just sort of how things work. And so those are my thoughts. The other thing I want to say, just as a full disclosure, under the open meeting law, I couldn't talk to any of these people about this at all, to share our thoughts and concerns. No way, because this is a matter before us and it is illegal for us to communicate outside of a public meeting. So I have no idea what they're thinking. I also didn't call any of you. None of you called me. So I'm coming into this open. And I was very open to all of your candidacies. And I'm so thrilled to see people who I think would make really terrific members of the school committee, even Mr. Vasilev, who, who I have talked to in the past and have enjoyed conversations with. I think there's a lot of potential in this room. And I hope you are all involved. You're all in town meeting. You're all the civic academy. You're all doing things that very much so pulling everybody you know out to vote for this override. And those are my thoughts. I, I'm just so grateful to meet you all.
Ms. Exton, did you want to say anything?
I will echo the appreciation that there is so much interest in Arlington for people to serve on the school committee, even in an interim position. It shows how important the schools are to this community and how invested all of you are in continuing to support them. I am actually very excited by how many people are considering running in the spring. I think that a lot of you shared some really thoughtful and important ideas. And I think it will be a robust and exciting campaign season where those of you who are not selected this evening will have an opportunity to really flush out and share your ideas and have, you know, this is a four-month appointment. And so the, as some people mentioned in their statements, there's sort of the business that we will accomplish in these four months. And there's the opportunity that a, a full three-year term could offer someone. So having said that, I'm probably showing my hand a little bit that I also am leaning towards someone who is not planning to run in, in, in the election this spring. Thank you all.
Before we vote, I just want to say, I want to thank all of you for, you know, putting your names in and applying. And when I went through all the resumes and I was pretty impressed by the backgrounds you all have, your educational backgrounds, your talent, your exposure, your experience and participation and a lot of things in life. And so a lot of talent in this room. And it is, it was, I, it was hard to kind of put anyone's name at the top and it's harder to decide now. So we'll, we'll see where this takes us. I, I want to echo what everyone said. It, you, you put your names forward to be candidates. We can only choose one out of 10 people. You've got to get, stay involved in the town. You're already involved in many different things. So stay involved, no matter what happens tonight. And, you know, there's a, this, this, the way the ballot works, there'll be a one-year seat from Ms. Borgans spot. That's a one-year seat. Then there's three-year seats that are open. So there's, there's opportunities on that ballot if you're not chosen. And I'm of the mindset that I really don't hold anyone to what they say about, when they, when they say, "I'm not going to run" or "I'm going to run," because a lot of things change between now and March. Life gets busy, people get new positions. You might get on the school committee and say, "There's no way I'm going to do this." Or you might get on the school committee and say, you might have said, "No, I'm not going to do it." And you're like, "You know, I kind of like it and I'm doing a good job. I don't want to stay." So I, I just don't really hold anyone to that. And I, I don't know if Mr. Schlickman equivocated 10, 12 years, whenever that was, but okay, courtesy says he did. I, I don't know. I thought, I thought he handled himself well. Okay. So thank you very much to everyone. And now we're going to vote. The, the rules require a roll call. So my job is to call each, each person by name, starting on the left, and have each person say their candidate. A majority is four, so we don't get four on the first try. We, by the rules, we, everyone else, we take off everybody but maybe two people. We'll see how the, the numbers go. And Mr. Schlickman and Dr. Allison Ampe will correct whatever I do wrong. You think I'm joking? Ms. Exton?
Alham Sedat.
Thank you. Mr. Carden?
Alham Sedat.
Dr. Allison Ampe?
Alham Sedat.
Mr. Schlickman?
Alham Sedat.
That's a majority. Ms. Goodison? Yes, yes, I'm just saying.
Alham Sedat.
Well, I'm making a unanimous, alham sedat. So let's have a round of applause for alham sedat. So again, thank you very much for participating. We only can select one. That means nine people go home happy or unhappy or hopefully, or motivated, hopefully motivated to stay further involved in any way you can. So we are only four minutes behind schedule.
That's impressive.
Yeah, you know, a lot of people, yeah. A lot of doubters on, on, on the ability of the chair tonight. I get it. But first, so don't go yet because we always have a special thing for the, the meeting in which the AHS rep, Zach Phan, gives us a little update on what is happening.
Before we go, before we go on, may I just say one thing?
Of course.
Yeah. One of the things we do at the beginning of every year is sign a pledge to abide by, file BDA-E School Committee norms and standards. Now, we don't require that of people who are coming on in the middle of the year. But I have a present for you, Ms. Sedat, a copy of BDA-E School Committee norms and standards and BCA School Committee Member Ethics and your membership pin in the Mass Association of School Committees, which you will join the minute you are sworn in by the clerk. So you have to go to Town Hall tomorrow and get sworn in by the clerk. Congratulations.
Did you want to say anything? You want to, you got to go to the mic.
No, thank you. I, like everyone else, was pretty blown away by the level of candidates that stepped up to put their hats into this. And it gives me a lot of hope for the future of Arlington and our schools. But also, thank you so much for your confidence in me. I hope that I can be useful during what is likely to going to be a challenging time physically for our town and our schools. And thank you for, again, thank you for your confidence.
Thank you very much. Zach, what's going on at the, at the high school? And are we going to win the football game on Thanksgiving Day?
I'm not sure. All right. I have some slides up.
Can we, I can't see the screen. Yes, you can. I've got too much glare on the screen.
We are.
Yeah, okay.
So since we haven't been able to go to a meeting since...
Zach, make sure you talk right into the mic too because we're...
Since we haven't been able to go to a meeting since the start of November, we're sharing our October Citizen and Staff of the Month. So our Staff of the Month is Kevin Hart, not the celebrity. Unfortunately, we weren't able to get a photo of him. So I can't prove that he's not the celebrity. But he's a custodian at AHS. We have a little blurb about him. Not only does he work diligently to keep our school clean, but he also shows interest in every student's personal and academic life. In the cafeteria, he is often stopping students to ask how their weekend was or how, how a game went. And while cleaning outside in the mornings, he welcomes everyone who passes with a good morning and have a great day. He's worked at Brackett Elementary School in the past. And one student who has known him since kindergarten remarked that he is unforgettable, that his kindness is something that sticks with you.
That's nice.
Now for our Student of the Month. Devon O'Day, she's captain of the swim team, hockey team, and lacrosse team, also leader of bridge builders club and hiking club. And I happen to be great friends with her. She's known as someone who is spirited, enthusiastic, kind, and an incredible young woman. Inside or out of AHS, whether it be with someone at lunch or a ninth grader in need of directions, she's always on the lookout for a student in need. Devon is always willing to lend a hand and make others feel at home. Devon has also been described as one of the most locked-in students who is involved in a wide range of clubs, everything from hiking club to Girls in STEM, to modeling, to Model UN, and everything in between. She's bright, positive, and waves at everyone to say hello and could not be a better student, athlete, and overall citizen. Next slide, please. So something that we don't really talk about a lot, that student council plays a big part in, is staff appreciation. We have like events for all staff groups. And one thing that we started last year was we recognized that during parent-teacher conferences, it's like a really stressful time for teachers since they have like, I was talking to one teacher, she has 14 conferences over two days, just back-to-back-to-back. So what we, what, what we started doing is we just got carts and we filled them with like snacks. We got some help from like the Ponder Cafe and the Lunch Staff. They provided like coffee and fresh fruit. So we, we just go along during the conferences and just provide them with a little pick-me-up. They really liked the coffee. So I just wanted to show a picture of that up there. At AHS, the wellness workshops are starting this Thursday. So they range from like yoga to coloring to how to help a friend. So these workshops are one-hour periods that replace advisory the next three weeks, which are meant to promote mental health. And then the Drama Guild has been putting on a performance called Museum in the new Black Box Theater. And the shows last weekend were completely sold out. And there are two more performances this coming weekend. And finally, sports have come to an end. So we're kind of in like the grace period between fall and winter sports. But we do have that one, that one football game. And that's all.
Thanksgiving morning, 10:00 AM.
Yep.
Any questions for Zach? Anybody have any questions? Great job as always. Thanks for keeping us informed. Appreciate it. Okay. We now move on to the next item on the agenda.
Mr. Chairley?
I'm sorry. Dr. Allison Ampe.
Could I ask for your indulgence to talk about something that would ordinarily come up under subcommittee meetings?
Yeah.
Because I think it's of interest to the greater audience here.
Sure.
So at, okay, so normally, this would be part of the Budget Subcommittee report, which will come later in the meeting. But I'm anticipating some of you may be sneaking out the door. And I wanted you to know that the Budget Subcommittee decided that we're going to have three forums on finance. Basically, what's going on, what could happen, what we're hoping to do about it. And these dates, there's going to be publicity going out, but we didn't want to do it in advance of telling the rest of the school committee. So that's why they haven't heard about it either. We can talk about it more when we get to the committee. But the dates we have set, and we haven't set the location yet, but that will be in the announcements. December 10th, January 14th, and January 27th, all at 7:00 PM. And there will be publicity, they will be both on, they'll be both in-person and hybrid with Zoom. And there'll be recordings that you can watch after. But I think if you're interested in learning more about the school finance and, and the whole situation, these are really going to be where you want to be. So thank you very much.
Of course. Does anyone else want to say anything out of turn? All right. Thanks very much. Okay. Now, we have one vote on the School Wellness Advisory Committee vacancy. Ms. Exton, you're still...
Yes.
You're cool.
If I get nominated and voted in, I'll do it.
Love it. Okay. May I have a, does anyone else want this job?
No, but I'll nominate her.
Go ahead.
I would like to nominate Ms. Exton as the School Committee representative to the School Wellness Advisory Committee.
Second.
End discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we don't have to, it's unanimous. We don't have to do a roll call for that. Now we have the presentation on Math Pathways by Mona Ford Walker.
Mr. Chair, could we pause for about two minutes to allow the gallery to leave if they so desire?
No, I think I should say it's math.
I don't want them to feel uncomfortable.
No, okay, you can go. All right. Thank you very much, everybody. Thanks for everything. Okay. Take care. All right. All right. All right, now, Dr. Homan, Dr. Homan's going to start the presentation.
Actually, Dr. Ford Walker's going to start the presentation. But I just wanted to name that we've, we had planned an update for this meeting several weeks ago when we were building out the schedule for updates. And the purpose here is to just give an update on where we're at with the Math Planning Task Force, understanding that the committee knew we were developing one, give an idea of some of what they've worked on so far, what their charge is, and what you can expect over the next couple of months as they work towards developing recommendations to bring to me and then ultimately to the school committee. So with that, I will hand it off to Dr. Ford Walker.
Great, thank you. Good evening, everyone. I'm excited to share an update on the work of the Math Pathways Planning Task Force. This evening, I'll be sharing a brief reminder of how the APS Strategic Plan connects to the work of the Math Task Force, the charge of the task force, the selection process of the task force members, the work to date of the task force, and then next steps. As a reminder, the vision of the Arlington Public Schools is to be an equitable educational community where all learners feel a sense of belonging, experience growth and joy, and are empowered to shape their own futures and contribute to a better world. APS values productive struggle for all learners, students receiving rich feedback from trusted peers and educators, students engaging in real-world tasks and applications, and students experiencing choice. APS's vision and these values are central to the work of the Math Task Force. The work of the task force is directly from the APS Strategic Plan, specifically Strategic Priority 1, Initiative 1.1 instructional vision. The Strategic Plan specifically identifies interrogating, excuse me, tracking and leveling practices across APS as a major milestone and names beginning community conversations surrounding the impact of skipping and leveling practices in the middle grades as a target. Math-focused community conversations begin last spring and the Math Pathways Planning Task Force will continue the work of engaging community members in sharing feedback about their math experiences, the impact of leveling practices within APS, and hopes for programming amongst other areas. in sharing feedback about their math experiences, the impact of leveling practices within APS, and hopes for programming amongst other areas. The charge of the task force is to develop recommendations for the next steps APS needs to take in order to implement pathways through math coursework that, uh, do these three things. Provide students with opportunities to access courses that align with their learning goals, align with existing APS commitments to multi-tiered systems of support, challenge by choice, and building foundational knowledge and core content, and that will be sustainable and efficient for the system to support financially, contractually, and structurally. The task force is committed to creating a system that includes challenge by choi- choice, informed agency, strong foundational knowledge, and flexible interventions. I'll share the selection process used to identify members of the Math Pathways Planning Task Force. APS, uh, APS's Teaching and Learning Department, my department publicly shared the application for the Math Pathways Planning Task Force last spring. We received sixty-three applications to the task force. The, um, application process was open throughout the summer and until the early fall, um, and the application was really structured in a way that posed questions that centered around themes. Um, and the following themes, um, really connected to each of the six, um, questions. The first being, um, we wanted applicants to have an opportunity to speak to their motivation and alignment with task force goals, their commitment to the goals of the task force, and how they view collaboration, their growth mindset, any relevant expertise and skills that would support the work of the task force, student-centeredness and equity, and finally, a desire to collaborate and inclusivity. The selection team used a blind scoring process. Names and identifying information were removed from applications, and then applications were scored. The task force consists of fifteen team members. Five are APS staff, seven are community members, one school committee member, who is also a parent, the director of math and computer science department, and myself. And these are the members of the task force. To date, the task force has met twice. We have worked on building our collective understanding of our charge, understanding our district commitments such as deeper learning, um, the strategic plan. We've also worked to build our collective understanding of the role of data and what data say about the current student performance in APS. Um, we are currently working on identifying da- data needs, um, that will help us meet our charge. Our next steps continue to be centered around the charge that's been provided to us. And our estimated timeline includes meeting in December and monthly, um, throughout the winter and spring of 2026. In January, the CIAA Subcommittee will receive an update around specific recommendations from the task force, specific recommendations that have budget implications, um, and those recommendations will be shared with school committee during that time as well. Um, and as I just mentioned, the task force will continue to meet monthly until April 2026. We will work on identifying additional recommendations that will most likely not have budget implications. Hopefully, they won't. Um, but we, the work of the task force needs to continue beyond, uh, January. Um, also, right now, the plan is to provide an update to both CIAA and, uh, the larger school committee in May regarding these additional recommendations that the task force, um, develops, and that concludes my presentation.
Thank you very much, Dr. Ford Walker. Questions? Anybody have any questions or comments or? Okay, seeing none, uh, we move on to the quarterly financial report. Mr. Schweitzer.
Hello.
Oh, you have a question?
Yeah, I do have a question. I'm sorry. I'm thinking for this afternoon or evening. Do you think, one, I think it'd be good as you go ahead with, uh, presenting the, what we're doing in math, to tie, to have one lane that is what the state requirements are. Because we're talking about going beyond or even well beyond the state requirements, I just think it's important for everyone to recognize that. So that was one question. And then the second question is, I understand how you did your choice, but I do wonder about, given that we've had parents who are very active and involved in this, the, not deliberate exclusion, but the fact that there is no inclusion, as I understand it, of parents who were involved in that.
So I would disagree with that. We actually have worked really hard to try to have a balanced group, and a balanced group of voices. And so there are some, um, I would say that the task force currently represents that, multiple perspectives in terms of, um, math experiences, but also desires to see, um, math programming kind of shift in different ways. And so that's why we've taken some time to really try to build collective understanding specifically centered in the strategic plan around what that document, what that tool says about math instruction. So that's kind of our, our grounding point right now, because people are coming with different ideas and thoughts about what the experience should be, and all those voices are valued.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Schlickman?
Yeah, the one, the other thing I'd like to s- to see going forward is, as we report out, is to sort of see what's on the horizon, is what people can look forward to, because I know there are people who are, uh, both, uh, satisfied and happy with what we're doing. There, there are places where there, there are folks who think that we're not really where we need to be. So there, there should always be sort of a, as a result of this work, uh, something, you know, something to look forward to. It, I think needs to be a foundation of what we're doing, uh, beyond the exercise, uh, whi- which, uh, which is, I guess, sort of a mission statement of sort for the, the committee, in that, okay, we're doing the analysis and we're looking at the problems, but, you know, what's, what's, what are the desire, what are the possible outcomes of this, and to keep those out front?
Okay, thank you for, Julie.
Can I just ask, did you have any elementary or middle school teachers apply?
I mean, I would have to go back through the applications, but, um, I know that we had a number of folks at the middle school level, um, and high school apply, um, but I would have to go back.
Okay.
Yeah.
Cause I, like, I see the coach, the middle school coach is part of the group, which is great. Um, I just hope you're trying to get some classroom voices in.
Yeah, absolutely.
I see one active teacher on the committee. All the other staff people are administrators or coaches. And it wouldn't surprise me if they didn't apply.
Yeah, I think we have.
I have to go back and look.
Okay.
We can look. I don't want to give false information.
Yeah. Are we good? Anybody have any questions?
I'm good.
Well, then, then that means we can move on. Okay, uh, Mr. Schweitzer, you're on the air. Go ahead.
Um, well, thank you, school committee, again, for, you know, for the appointment, for the trust you have in me, uh, be stewards of these funds to serve on this team and serve the greater community, honored and humbled, and look forward to working with you. Just to kind of set expectations for this first update of the year from me, uh, gonna start off briefly by doing a, an overview of some of the status of our grants. Then we'll go to the general fund, which is presented in the same manner as you've been receiving it, uh, all of last year. And then before I open up for questions, I'll kind of present or reiterate some of the comments I have during this, uh, initial presentation of some of the ongoing work that myself and the team are going to take on to kind of refine this presentation and be able to bring in front of the board, um, you know, transparent information that can better inform decision-making going forward. So starting on grants, uh, within the, uh, the agenda, there was three attachments that highlight our non-entitlement grants. So the first attachment are FY twenty-four and twenty-five awards that have been fully spent, so these are all closed out. Uh, the second attachment goes on to the second page, reviews all FY twenty-five non-entitlement grants that still have, uh, some sort of carry balance into this current fiscal year. And then the third attachment are FY twenty-six non-entitlement grants, again, that, uh, were newly awarded this year. I'd personally like to thank all those that are part of the grant award process, uh, applications, all the administering. Here is highlighting all the non-entitlement grants, so these are ones that we're competitively going for, we're not entitled to it, and even what we may apply to DESI for, aren't necessarily guaranteed to get that amount we applied for. So, um, you know, thankful for the collaborative work and creativity of the team to kind of find, you know, funding support for students and families in targeted ways. And then specifically, as you'll know, uh, most of the grants that are on there are private grants from the AEF. So I personally like to thank them for continuing to support the, the students, the staff, and the initiatives and activities of the school district. And then lastly, on grants, I believe it's within your consent agenda, is kind of a memo highlighting all of the active grants that we have right now, including the submission of all the FY twenty-six entitlement grants that were released and the awarded, so I'll be within your consent agenda to approve those. Moving on to the general fund review, again, this report kind of follows the same structure and methodology, um, that you're expected to see. I'll walk through kind of the methodology of how I built the report and the projections, different assumptions and things that kind of stand out to me as we go, um, and as I continue to dig deeper. So first and foremost, this report is as of October thirty-first, so all actuals and encumbrances you see are what was in the system, and then any of the projections or forecasts we have in there are in that projected column within the charts. So to project payroll, our methodology was to look at any of the current posted positions and current roster, uh, on our staff through the rest of the year, so that is in the projected column. One of the things I know that the committee has been looking for and, and we're still testing out is to have encumbrances within MUNIS, the accounting system itself. So we've been doing some continuous testing this week and hoping in the next couple of weeks that we can go live with that. It wouldn't necessarily change numbers, but it'd be a lot easier if that was already embedded as an encumbrance within the system instead of us having to do offline analysis. So for the next meeting, uh, next update that I do, I hope to have that in there. To project the non-personnel expenditures, uh, there's several assumptions that I had to make. So we assume that all departments are going to spend their operational budgets. So this is kind of conservative in nature, uh, but this methodology, especially this early in the year, want to ensure that all the departments have access to the funds, and they have access to what, you know, budget of activities might come later in the winter or the spring. So we assume that all departments will fully spend their budgets. The other thing, too, is embedded within some of the actuals that have already been spent or the encumbrances is we have a lot of operational open POs. So to kind of support operational efficiency, departments for goods and for services, um, with vendors that we frequent have access to those open POs. I think at this time of the year, those are obviously encumbered. As we get more into probably my second, third, and fourth update, we get later in the winter and spring, we'll look more strictly at those open POs with each department to make sure that we're not carriers, carrying, you know, too much excess encumbrances, and we can return cash, um, to the bottom line. Revolving accounts have yet to really be tapped into yet this year, so anything that's eligible or anticipated to be charged is something that we're going to have to transfer in. So those aren't necessarily off of the bottom line yet. Uh, beyond circuit breaker reclassifications, that I aspire to do immediately, we'll review all accounts as revenue comes in through the year and see what is eligible to be transferred to those. As we turn to, uh, page seven here, this is kind of the bottom line of the object code. Uh, our table shows a non-adjusted deficit, however, as I've already alluded to, there's several of the routine outstanding items that overcome that deficit, which haven't occurred yet. Most notably is we have about $2 million of last year's circuit breaker that we are able to carry over. So that is still in the top chart, has to be reclassified out, and will ensure that those encumbrances will be posted to circuit breaker directly going forward. Uh, I know I kind of spoke to this in the application process, but in upcoming years, we'll just encumber directly to that so that we don't have to do any sort of transfers. Uh, on grants, we still have some salaries that have to be charged directly to the two forty IDA grant that was recently approved. So again, too, we'll postate those and then adjust those payrolls to hit there directly. And then lastly, we've yet to recognize any of the revenues for rentals and some of the other revolving account, um, activities I kind of spoke to before. So with all this said, some of the unreflected transfers, without even having to dig into this year's circuit breaker number, that presents a small surplus in our conservative projection at this time. So before I open up for questions, I just wanted to highlight, again, some things that I, I personally am going to be working on, our team's going to be working on, uh, to kind of enhance these projections going forward. Uh, I'll be working on reviewing all the revolving accounts, uh, to see the best way to kind of share the health of those and how we're using those effectively. There has to be a better way to track the report than it's been built thus far, and for me to actually understand the financials, too. Um, so I look forward to working with the subcommittee on the best way to present that going forward. Uh, certainly in the upcoming days, we'll be performing the circuit breaker grant and other revolving account transfers that are appropriate at this time. Uh, circuit breaker's obviously the biggest one. Uh, I'll be reviewing all the payroll accounts, making sure that we're charging and reconciling to the correct lines, and reviewing those against how we budgeted. That, too, on the non-personal items, looking at our actuals and encumbrances that have hit to make sure that we're posting those appropriately as well, and whereas maybe there's discrepancy on where we had budgeted those set expenses. So kind of getting ahead of this report, maybe questions you have. Uh, we do have some instances where there's lines that have a budgeted number. We don't necessarily have reflected expenses, and in the converse of that, we have some lower budgeted lines that have a lot of expenses. So I think through this reconciliation effort that I and the team will be taking on here in the next couple of weeks, we'll certainly be able to support some transfers that I can present to the board. I know in the past, there's some transfers that have been spoken to, but maybe it came later in the spring. I want to try and get ahead of those before our next quarterly report so that we can have a new solid foundation, um, going forward. So, thank you for your time, and I'll open it up for any questions.
Questions? Anybody have any questions? I thought, Mr. Carden?
Thank you. I mean, you've committed to looking at the revolving funds, so that's great. One part of that is what we budgeted for spending from those funds. I wasn't able to access it right away. I think it was more than that, but, um, just to reconcile that as well.
Sure. Anyone else? No one else? Okay, good. Just making sure. All right. Thank you very much. Great report. Appreciate it, and welcome aboard. We're glad you're here. Next, uh, is the superintendent's evaluation. Dr. Holman.
So in your materials is a link that I think you can click on, also in your email. There is, you can't click on it?
The one in the materials, no.
Okay.
I haven't tried the email yet.
Okay.
But I just, it's giving like a weird, Google refuses to connect.
Okay, I was able to open it for some reason, um, and you can't for some reason. So, uh, Ms. Dickens and I will work on that and make sure it's publicly accessible for everybody. And, but, it will be, oh, it works for Julie, so it depends which side of the room you're working, sitting on, apparently.
I got the sad face.
I did, so if you're on that side of the table, you can use the link, and if you're over here, you have a sad face. I'm sorry. The, there is a link that I do believe works in your inboxes, and we'll double-check the link, and I have another way that we can also post it in the materials so that folks can get to it. I, it, I'm not going to pull it up right now because it is very much in draft form, and I'm still adding artifacts to it. I am hoping to have that, I, I will have that done before the Thanksgiving holiday. I'm hoping to have that done by Friday. We'll let the committee know when everything is in there. Um, I wanted to explain briefly the approach that I've taken to providing artifacts. Um, one of the shifts that we, that I did, based on some feedback from the committee for last, for this year's goals, and we're kind of on a calendar year cycle with these, is, um, I provided both outcomes that are articulated with data and outputs or like indicators that we're working on things, um, as examples of ways that you might know. And most of those things are things you've already seen at a school committee meeting or in a subcommittee meeting. There are a few things that you haven't, and so I'm choosing two key artifacts for each of our goals. The two district improvement goals, um, and my two goals, the student learning goal and the professional practice goal, and I'm including those key artifacts. This is in the interest of, due to the conversation we had at our last meeting, streamlining things to the extent possible so that you're not digging through a whole lot of evidence. But I'm happy to add on, or if you're, if you're thinking like, what did this look like because I didn't include it as an artifact, please don't hesitate to reach out to me, and I can either add it to the website or I can share more information with you. For each goal, I'm also going to provide a reflection that speaks directly to progress on the things that we said would be evidence. And I provide either a little, uh, hourglass next to each item or a green checkmark. If it's a green checkmark, it means we got through this and it's fully completed. If it's an hourglass, it means we're still working on it, need maybe a little more time. You might see that goal shift with some new language, um, into its next step or next phase in next year's goals, and you might anticipate seeing that one again. So that's just an overview of kind of how to read the site and the different things that are there or will eventually be there by the end of this week or before we go on Thanksgiving break, and like I said, I'll email everyone and let you know when everything's posted.
Can I say something first? Yeah, okay, so the, I think our schedule's going to be this, but I wanted to kind of talk about with the group, and that is that we would, um, do Dr. Holman's evaluation the last meeting of the, of the county, the last meeting in December. So we would ask people to get stuff to me and to Ms. Dickens, um, at a date before that that I haven't thought about yet. Does that work for people? Everybody, does that work? So yeah, so I mean, I think we'll probably, you know, we probably, we need a week. Ms. Dickens, you and I. Ms. Diggins, you and I, yeah?
You'll need time to compile.
I need time to compile.
The last, and the last meeting is the 18th, correct?
Yeah. So why don't we just plan it everything to me like by, let's say, December 10th? Okay. So Wednesday, December 10th, that would be the deadline to get everything in. You're going to get everything into the thing by next week?
By the end of the week. I'll do it by the end of the week.
All right. Well, we'll be okay if you don't do it until next week. It's not going to be the end of the world. All right. And then, yeah.
Can you circulate the evaluation form you want us to use or what?
I've thought deeply about that one and yes. Remember, I didn't apply for this.
I know. You can use the same one as last year.
I am going to use the same one as last year. Yeah. So for.
Update it with the correct goals, I guess.
Thank you for that. Yeah. I'm going to use the same one as last year, update it with the correct goals. And then Dr. Holman and Dr. Diggins and I are going to have phone calls. Aunt Diggins. Well, you know, you got a PhD working here. Okay. Now, questions? Yes, go ahead.
I was able to open it if I opened it to a new tab. I told it deliberately to open into a new tab. It worked.
It's just a question of being nice to the link. That's all. Anything else? Okay. Great. Next is the superintendent's update.
All right.
We are now ahead of schedule, folks.
Oh, one quick thing, actually.
That was uncalled for.
I believe Ms. Sadat will not be able to participate in the evaluation.
By law?
No.
By policy.
Yeah. Sorry.
He's probably like, thank you.
You're welcome. Okay. We're on. Go ahead.
Okay. I would like to begin by updating Ms. Keys that there was one elementary staff member who applied to the math test.
Oh.
Sorry. I was, I was asked to include that in my update. And for everyone else, we have some updates on kindergarten registration, some events happening around the district. So for kindergarten registration, on November, on December 8th, from 12 to 1:00 p.m., we will hold a new student registration information session. And then I started to write this will be or is going to be accessible in the following ways. And then I asked the question of our incredible leader of the enrollment team and I didn't come back to my slides to put that in. So what I will say is that there will be materials from that session available to the public in some form or fashion, whether that is through a recording or the slides being accessible and translated, probably both. But we're, I was waiting for the answer and I don't want to say the wrong answer. So I will update that slide with this and I will, we will re-upload it when we're done. But we will have the information from that session, which covers everything from our after-school programs, how to get registered, documents you need to register, what the, what the different residency documents are, where you can find them. All of that information is included in this forum, which we've done. Now this will be the second time. Then we will be opening registration on January 5th and we will, I will be making initial buffer decisions by February 27th. We have met with the after-school programs and talked with them about the dates that they will open up their registration in terms of like being able to register to do the lottery. They all have rolling registration, so you can put your registration in at any time. But they will not run a lottery until after initial buffer decisions are communicated to families so that they know where they're going to be. And then we'll have a few more dates and deadlines after that and I'll communicate those as we get a little closer to registration opening up.
Can I just ask a follow-up question? And it, some, this is not really our responsibility, but it's something I know that the public asks a lot about, about a lot. For a family in a buffer zone, they should apply to enter the lottery to both after-school programs. Because, I'm, I'm, I'm asking.
Yes, they should.
Because then they will get their buffer zone assignment.
Yes.
But they will have been put on the list for both schools.
Yes.
Is that accurate?
Yes.
Okay.
And the, the after-schools and I came up with a plan that would ensure that we didn't send them then if they like got in through the lottery. We didn't, we opened that spot up. If they didn't get into that school, that we're not opening that spot. We're opening that spot to another family. We're not keeping that spot held in the event that they enter a waitlist, for example. So one of the things that has become challenging.
To go to the other buffer zone school.
Right. Right. So one of the challenges that we've always had is that people put the application in both places. The after-schools want this because they want to know that somebody wants a spot. We don't want, families don't need to wait till they get their buffer decision to put their applications in. But the after-schools and I need to coordinate better on the buffer decision so that they can run a lottery for the slots that are available and for the families that are going to that school. I, we have to do that very carefully because we can't share information with the after-schools. So we're going to do it differently where they'll, they'll share the registration information and we can indicate the families that got it, that are going to be at that school that have gotten that buffer assignment. Because we don't, we don't want people doing is putting the deposit in hoping for a waitlist decision that's not going to come until August.
And you're talking about the waitlist for the buffer zone school? I just want to make sure because people think about waitlist for after-school. So I just want to be clear what waitlist we're talking about.
And if they would like to, they can be on a waitlist for the after-school program in hopes that they get off of the waitlist for the buffer zone. But we don't want to take up two spots, one at each buffer zone school because a family is on the waitlist really hoping that the decision might change. And this was particularly, this, we've had a pretty good rhythm for this for many years. Last year got complicated because of the buffer approach that we took. Because we had more folks who may not have gotten their first choice. And so we are working on a process that will not compromise, like not be us sharing any information about families, but will allow us to help the after-school know whether, like which families on their list were accepted, were like placed at that school as part of a buffer zone decision, not accepted because they're not an application. Does that make sense?
Yes. And so the message that we should be sending to the community right now as they ask and panic about after-school is apply to both, any school that you are in a buffer zone for, you should apply to after-school to all of those programs right now.
Correct.
And can I add just another clarifying? What I'm hearing you saying is if, if a family is in the buffer between Stratton and Pierce, their first choice was Stratton, they get assigned to Pierce. When you assign them to Pierce, they can, after that happens, they will not be holding any spot at Stratton after-school.
Correct. Okay. Yes.
That's probably a bad example because Stratton, I don't know. I don't understand.
We are, we're working with, oh, we're working with all of them on this strategy.
Any more questions?
Thank you.
Okay.
Dr. Allison Ampe looks perplexed, so I'm pausing.
I'm not perplexed. I'm just thinking that you're kind of taking decision-making ability out of the families and I'm not, I understand the problem, but you're also... I don't know. I need to think about this some more. I'm, it gives me a little worried feeling.
I.
I'm not saying I have a better answer.
Yeah, we, families do all the same things.
Right, right. But let me, let me finish. So what I'm concerned about is what you are doing. So, so let's say I'm in this Pierce-Stratton buffer zone that Laura just mentioned. And I get into Pierce, but I really wanted to go to Stratton. So I am still holding out hope for Stratton. But you have taken me out of that after-school. And so then in August, if my Stratton assignment comes through, then all of a sudden, I have no after-school. And I have no way of obtaining after-school because I'm like way the heck, I mean, I may still be on a waitlist, but you see what I'm saying? I'm just, that makes me a little worried.
They would be on the waitlist in the order of the run lottery. So.
So they would be at the top of the waitlist because they would have already had a.
Because they would have already applied.
Spot that they would have given up.
Yes.
Right.
When they run the lottery, the lottery defines the waitlist. Because if you're, if you're in the lottery, you're up the top. So they would be, what they would do is take the lottery. They would bump, they would take any families that were assigned to the other school and move them onto the waitlist so that they could bump a couple of families that were assigned, that are at the school to find, like already determined to be at the school into that spot. So it'd be a swap with the folks. But let me double check with this, that, that that's how they're going to run the lot, that's how you run a lottery. So I'm guessing that's how they do it. But I can talk to them about that. So you're at the top of that waitlist.
Right. But you are getting rid of an actual spot for a potential spot.
Yes, and.
No, I'm, I'm just saying.
I mean, I would say it was all a lottery in the first place, so.
Yes, and, you know, if our goal is to provide more access to after-school support, we already take a lot of familial considerations into account when we make the buffer decisions around siblings and everything else. And I understand how hard it can be sometimes to, to be really hope, having held out hope for one school and the buffer zone responsibilities to balance. And so we want to make sure that we're doing that and providing access to the after-school program. And those waitlist decisions are quite late in the process. So I wouldn't want a family to need to make a completely different decision because they can't get after-school access at the school where they're actually assigned.
And a family can ultimately decline in August. Oh, we have a spot at Stratton. They can say, nope, I have my after-school up here, so I'm happy to stay there now.
Yep.
Okay.
Do we have any data as how many people get moved off the date of the waitlist at that point in the process?
I could go find it. There were a handful last year.
My guess is that if you're at the top of the waitlist, there, there's probably somebody else shifting out of there. So you'd have a high probability of getting in. I'm just sort of trying to get a sense of that probability.
The waitlist was more a, like, we had more waitlist requests at certain schools where we had to make sure that we left room because of their adjacent schools. And so we ended up having a little bit of room for some of those families to get in on the waitlist. So it's not so much that a family was moving out, however, though that particular school where there were more waitlisted families also has more options for after-school programming in the neighborhood and at the school.
Okay. Anything else?
Yes, I have more in my update. That was the first item. There are several more.
Take a break and play with the fidget toy?
Hold on.
Fidget toy, just whip it around real fast.
Appreciate the fidget toy, Mr. Schlickman.
I know my superintendent. Got to keep her happy.
On Tuesday, November 25th, the Welcome Center is hosting a warm-up-for-winter event. You might have noticed coats in the hallway when you came in. This is open to all Arlington families. We realize that families are often turning over coats. I don't know about everybody else, but in my household, we have a new coat every year because my children grow like weeds. So if you're in search of a winter coat and are interested in contributing to some of our sustainability goals, we've accepted donations of new or lightly worn winter wear with help from PTOs, APS staff and families and hope you can stop by and pick out something warm. It is not required that community members sign up for the, for a shopping sort of slot time, but it will help the Welcome Center plan for traffic and a number of people in the room. If you can estimate timing by scanning the QR code there on the screen. And we'd like to thank our Welcome Center volunteers, we have several of them, interns and donors for their support. The Arlington Special Education and Civil Rights Integrated Monitoring Review conducted, the state came and conducted site visits, interviews, document collections. And all of that is now complete. They kept the survey open for an additional week and we're grateful to the CPAC and Ms. Elmer for collaboration on messaging to help make sure people could find the link that was perhaps difficult to find in one's email. We will have an exit interview with Desi in December and we'll expect a report sometime in the weeks following that. Ms. Elmer, anything to add on that?
None at this time.
Fantastic. We had a professional learning day last week. Was that last week? Yes.
Yes.
And in some opening remarks, I expanded upon some of what we talked about in opening day. At opening day, we talked about how deeper learning exists at the intersections of mastery, creativity and identity. And gave some examples of what that looks like when it's happening in our schools, directly from some of our schools. You can see a middle school science class there where we were learning about the laws of physics by supporting textbooks with paper and tape. And we also then did unconference sessions and I included the menu for those unconference sort of ed camp sessions in your materials, in case you'd like to take a look at some of the offerings that educators came up with. It was an informal way for teachers to learn from teachers and for paraprofessionals to learn from teachers and for paraprofessionals to learn from paraprofessionals. And it was a great experience and we learned a lot. And we're hoping that we can do it again in some future professional development days. We are also doing a community survey reset in 2025. This is about the time of year that we would typically send out panorama surveys to the community. But we are slowing down some of the process for that because it, it takes a lot to develop the survey. And over the last few years, we've used the same questions. And we'd kind of like to reset that because when you ask the same questions over and over again, people stop taking the survey, it turns out. And we would like to take a look at the question banks, the other questions that the platform offers us. Consider what we use the platform for, what we'd like to use the platform for. It offers a lot of tools that we haven't taken full advantage of, so we'd like to take a look at those and understand that. So we have a review committee of administrators who are also working with educators to get feedback on the surveys. And we want to take that feedback into account. We've gotten feedback from community members about different topics that they'd like to see on some of the surveys and we want to gather some of that information and look at the available content. So stay tuned for more updates this spring because we are still committed to getting survey feedback from community stakeholders across different groups. But we're not going to be surveying in fall as we take the time to really sort through our approach and think about how we want to move forward with our feedback cycles with community members. And enrollments are in your materials. And I reset the comparison at the bottom of the enrollment spreadsheet to compare against October 1st so that you can see how things are moving during this school year against our October 1 report date. I'm happy to take any questions.
Questions?
I don't see the enrollments in there.
Oh, are they not in there? I sent them.
They were in the email.
They were in an email, but not in the.
I sent them in the email. I sent the committee so we can upload them. Yeah, sorry about that.
Any other questions? Anything else? Okay. Consent agenda. By the way, minutes, we, we do, what are we doing with this?
Yeah, well, I'm sure it'll be next meeting, right?
You sent it, you sent the minutes to Paul and me and we.
I saw an exact, I didn't see the regular enough to go look. I was at, I was at conference last week, so I may, may not have seen it.
All right. Yeah, we'll get it done. Okay. So the consent agenda is, all items listed with an asterisk are conducted to be, are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a member of the committee so requests, in which event the item will be considered in its normal sequence. November 25th, 2025 grant memo. We have a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Aye. All opposed? It's a unanimous vote. Okay. But, the subcommittee liaison reports. Dr. Allison Ampe, budget?
So budget met, met on the 12th and we discussed outreach, which consists of these forums, which I have already mentioned on, to be held on, where's my dates? December 10th, January 14th, January 27th, 7:00 p.m. Ms. Gittleson and I are going to work together to start fleshing them out. The first one is going to be very similar to the presentation that the superintendent and I did last year. And then the other ones are going to build from there. We also discussed, for long-range plan, we're having to start thinking about, we're having to think about how the school funding will be accrued over the next few years. And there is interest, especially on the town side, for changing the model. And we are starting to look at various models and will continue that discussion at our meeting on the 20th.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions for Dr. Allison Ampe? Thank you. Ms. Gittleson, community relations.
We are still putting, meeting on December 5th. And we are still accepting applications for the nominee to the Human Rights Commission through December 1st.
the nominee to the Human Rights Commission through December 1st.
Primum instruction and assessment accountability, Ms. Exton.
Nothing to report.
Facilities, nothing to report. Policies and procedures, Mr. Schlickman. Okay, we still have pending for us, which we were planning to look at in December. Community use of school facilities, file KF and KFE. MASC has recommended adding a policy for access to buildings and grounds, which would be a new file ECAB. We don't have it, and they're recommending we adopt one. Having gone through the fulfillment of an unexpired term, I think there are a couple of tweaks we need to make in the policy. And anyone who has any thoughts of how to adjust this policy to make it read a little smoother? I know I was answering questions for Mr. Thielman, I think some of the wording can be a little better. We should do a slight revision of that to make it align to both state law and what we want it to say, because we're putting that policy out to the people who are applying. There's a new recommended policy from MASC, which will, would be file KBG to conform to the new state laws involving parent advisory councils. There's some, there's another new policy from MASC, which would be file EFBA, school food and nutrition meal modifications to conform to regulations. When I was at the MASC conference, they, I went to the, a session on new member onboarding, seeing that we're going to have at least one new member onboarding, and if Ms. Sadat doesn't bless us with running for reelection or election, we'll be onboarding a new member in, in April. And one of the things that they strongly recommended was that the school committee maintain a school committee handbook. So I asked MASC for some samples of what they view as exemplary handbooks, and we can present those and take a look and read through those and see if we want to establish one for the committee, and if so, what we wanted to do. So that's sort of what's on the agenda for the Policies and Procedures Committee, and as soon as we are ready to go on the use of school facilities and have a clear direction from where the administration would like to go, we'll schedule another meeting. Okay, so our meeting's scheduled right now? No, okay. Any questions from Schlickman? Next, Arlington High School Building Committee, we meet on December 2nd. The committee still has, you know, meetings and, and stuff to do for, until the whole project is closed out, but there's nothing to report, I don't think. Any Liaison Reports?
Yes. Long Range Planning Committee, we had a meeting last, was it last week?
Friday.
Last Friday. Yes, Ms. Gittleson was at her first meeting, yay, did a great job, and.
Said nothing.
She sat right up at the table, though. And we have two meetings in December planned and one in January, so we're in the phase where we, we're building the, the plan, the town long-range plan.
Right.
For the next few years, that will form the, the override plan, the commitments that will go to the voters. So we'll also have to sign on to those commitments, so there's a lot of work to do in a very short timeframe. The thinking is to, to avoid running into a cliff in June, is to do the override with the town election in March, but the school, the select board has to determine that. But we're trying to get everything ready so that, that can be done if that is so, if that, if that ends up being their choice.
And I, my understanding is if they, they would take a vote in December to set a March 20, that, that the rover, override be on the date of the town election, and then sometime in January, they would set the number. Is that your understanding?
That's the ideal timing, yes.
Okay. And the Long Range Planning Committee will, representatives will be in the discussions about the number?
Yes.
Okay. All right, any questions? Anything else? Any announcements? Future agenda items? All right, we're going to go into an executive session, and are we going to come back? We are going to come back and take a vote, okay? So I'm going to need a motion to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body, and the chair so declares, and. So moved. So moved.
Second.
Second, we will be returning. Roll call, Ms. Exton.
Yes.
Mr. Carden.
Yes.
Dr. Allison Ampe.
Yes.
Mr. Schlickman. Yes. Ms. Gittleson.
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. Mr. Chair, I'd like to ask the committee to invite a member designee, or a member designee to attend executive session. There's a motion to invite the member designee to executive session. They have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Do we have to do roll call for this? No, just voice vote. Yeah, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. Welcome aboard.
You don't have to say aye.
Okay. You can say wherever you want. Yeah. So let us know when we're ready to go. Yep. And we are coming back for a vote. Okay, we are returning from executive session. We had a discussion in executive session about a memorandum of agreement.
Recording in progress.
Between the Arlington School Committee and the American Federation of State County and Municipal Employees AFL-CIO, State Council 93, Local 680, school tech cafeteria workers, in which we agreed to the contract. Do you want to speak to it all?
I want to thank the committee, Mr. Schlickman, for participating, our Director of Food Services, Denise Boucher, our partners in the Local 680 Union and the cafeteria workers for our successful contract negotiations. There were some delays in this contract for various reasons, but we have now had an agreement.
It's a three-year contract.
And it's a three-year contract retroactive to July 1st of this.
Expiring in 2028.
Yes.
Motion to approve the memorandum of agreement and authorize the chair to sign on our behalf. Have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? We don't need to take a roll call. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? It is unanimous. Can you announce who seconded that for the minutes? Well, it was a tie. Dr. Allison Ampe versus Laura Gittleson. Pick one. Which one do you want?
I would pick Kirsty.
Okay, Kirsty first, okay. They went at the same time, and I didn't want to be. Well, you have to announce it because it makes it hard for her to do the minutes. Dr. Allison Ampe made the second. I thought we resolved all of our issues, Paul. I'm just coaching, encouraging the new chair. I thank you, I thank you, I thank you. You have no idea how much I appreciate it. Okay, there is no other. I do, can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
It is not debatable. It is not debatable. That was by Ms. Exton. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. The meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much, welcome.